Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the first meeting of fiscal year 2023. If we could first begin by introducing ourselves and the staff, we can go around. We can start with Maggie.
I'm a Yale Field member.
Rich?
I'm a Rich Field member.
Sean?
Sean Fahey, member.
And our staff, Tim?
Tim Zerwinski, Director of Planning and Community Development.
Julia?
Julia Getman-Clerk.
Great, and Josh?
I think Josh is on his way in.
Okay, great. We'll go ahead and then call the meeting to order. The first thing we can start with is administrative items. Meeting dates, the next meeting dates that we have scheduled currently are July 28th and August 11th. I am actually away July 28th. If we don't have anything pressing or urgent, which, you know, hopefully we'll be able to wrap up some things this evening. I'm wondering, Tim, what you think about not having this meeting since we might be meeting with the Select Board the first week in August? Possibly?
I think that's fine. I don't have any applications in right now that are being advertised, nor do I expect any. The only, the only thing that I think the board should be sensitive of, and hopefully it would be a quick matter, whether it's the first week in August, or if we schedule a quick one-off, you know, meeting, is we're reviewing a decision tonight for 34 Milton Hill Road subdivision approval. We also have a decision for the Walcott Woods special permit amendment. That unfortunately, because only Meredith, Rich, and Cheryl were on the board at the time, only those three folks can vote on that, on that decision. So we'll have to find a time when, when all three of you are available. The only thing I would, I would like to get that done sooner rather than later, just because that approval happened a fair number of weeks ago, and I'd like to get that decision out before. So that may be something that maybe we can schedule offline for a quick, a quick session for you guys to just take a look at that and, and open up a public meeting to approve it.
I think that sounds great. I'd like to be able to go ahead and approve that and finalize that as well. So I think we could arrange that. So, so let's just say that our next meeting, and again, we'll, we'll discuss this a little bit later. Trying to coordinate a meeting with the Select Board and a joint meeting with the Planning Board, just to discuss just some general things about, you know, planning in Milton, and what we're looking forward to doing as a town, and what we hope to see, and just in process, and how we hope to achieve these goals. So there was a meeting, and we'll, you know, I guess we can discuss that a little bit later. It's on the agenda that the Select Board had, and we're going to try to, you know, find a date that we can all get together, both boards. It's hard to coordinate even one board. So we could talk maybe between Tim and the Select Board's office on a doodle poll or something that we could try to see what the best date would be for the most people. So, so be on the lookout maybe for that, an email on that. But so for now, let's say the next meeting will then be August 11th, except for once we, we will probably want to meet regarding the Walcott Woods. That date will be to be determined. So, okay. The next thing, if everyone has had a chance to look at the minutes from June 23rd, and it would be just Maggie, Sean, and myself who would be able to vote on those. Have you all had a chance to review?
Yes, I did, Meredith. I have, I have no questions. The minutes that I looked at were already edited, so I agree with everything that was in the minutes.
Great.
Yep, same here, so I'm good to go.
Great, great. Okay, so if I could entertain a motion to approve the meeting of the Planning Board minutes for Thursday, June 23rd.
I'll make them.
Motion?
I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion, Meredith.
Okay, and second?
Yep, my second.
Okay, roll call. Sean?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Okay, thank you all. The minutes are approved. Next on the agenda, we have a staff update. Tim? Sorry.
I really shouldn't have taken that last bite when I knew.
I'm sorry.
A couple of things. One thing I want to continue to keep the board apprised of is the process, the process that we're going through to get the zoning recodification up and ready to go for October Town Meeting. So we've been meeting with the Town Clerk, Town Council, the Bylaw Review Committee, and Meredith representing the Planning Board, kind of come up with a process. There's been a significant amount of, I call them edits, I hesitate to call them changes, because the substance of, of the language of the zoning code has not changed at all. But it's, it's a situation where the code looks a lot different than what we're accustomed to. And so I'm working with Alex Whiteside, who's been sort of the primary architect for the Bylaw Review Committee of these edits to the zoning bylaw. You know, the, the thinking is that, you know, when you've got an opportunity to kind of open up the hood on, on the zoning bylaw, you know, we're not going to go so far as to make substantive changes, because that's a can of worms that I don't think Town Meeting is ready for. But just in terms of grammar and punctuation and formatting and all of those things, you know, you want the zoning to look as clean as, as you can. And so that's the opportunity that the Bylaw Review Committee has taken. But it just, it just looks like a lot of change. And so we're trying to figure out the best way to present that information to Town Meeting members, to the Planning Board, to the Fore and Committee, in a way that is both easily digestible. And I'll use the term trustworthy, because, you know, we don't want people to think that, you know, there's anything fishy going on, you know, because there are a lot of changes. They're, you know, on the whole, kind of, large groups of types of changes. You know, if you change the indent of a subsection, every similar subsection, all the way through the zoning code, has to change. And so that's 100 changes right there. So that's really where the kind of eye-popping number comes in. But, you know, if we want to make sure that everyone understands what's going on, understands that, you know, the, the language is the same, look at the feel of it, it's different. So we've been working on that. We'll continue to update the Planning Board. There's going to come a point soon in the summer where we're going to sort of do a little bit more intensive public outreach, public education about what Town Meeting is going to be seeing, just to sort of get people acquainted with what they're looking at. And when we get the Town Meeting, it's not blowing anyone away in terms of something that they haven't seen already. You know, we're also working through some of the legal questions about what does the article need to look like? What are the notice requirements? Do we need to print the whole thing in the warrant? I don't think we do. The fortunate thing is other towns have, have done this process before. And we've gotten some advice and some guidance from the Attorney General's Office about. So, you know, this is, it's an important thing. It's, it's a long time coming. We want to make sure we get it right in October, because ultimately, what we're trying to do is make the zoning code easier to access for residents, for builders, for homeowners, for public officials. We want to make sure we get it right. We want to make sure we're bringing Town Meeting along. Stay tuned. Probably be some more updates in the coming weeks.
Can I ask a question?
Oh, yeah, go for it, Sean, I'm sorry.
Yeah. It, it, we're trying to, we're trying to position for October Town Meeting, right?
Yes.
Do you, do you have a concern that we might be overly ambitious with, what, 12 weeks to that Town Meeting to accomplish everything that needs to be accomplished?
I, I don't, I don't think so, because we, we've, we've really been working kind of behind the scenes since, since the annual Town Meeting, just kind of strategize, you know. Strategizing is the wrong word, but, but everyone's been thinking about these issues. And it really kind of hinges on, you know, putting together, you know, educational materials and, and, you know, doing the, the amount of outreach that we need to do. I, I think, I think it's doable. I mean, the, we don't even have a date set for the Town Meeting, so I think everyone presumes that we'll have one. I think it's a safe bet, but also, you know, we don't technically have a Town Meeting going yet. So we're going to continue to plug along. You know, if we get to the point where, you know, we're, we're close to the finish line and we're not quite there yet, then, 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 then we take, we take the time that we need. I, I don't think anyone is rushing this project. The opposite, actually. It's been, it's been going on for quite some time. But like I said, we want to get it right. And I don't think anyone is going to want to cavalierly kind of bring something to the floor of Town Meeting, but we don't have a reasonable assurance that Town Meeting is comfortable passing. So I think we have to work at the pace that we're working at. But also, the, the importance of getting it right is, is paramount. And so, you know, we're going to continue to kind of evaluate where we are in that. And the Planning Board, quite frankly, has a big role in that. I mean, this is going to be technically a zoning article. So we're going to have a Planning Board public hearing, you know, nothing of other, less formal outreach and discussion of the Planning Boards. So, you know, Sean, you'll, you'll have, you'll have an opportunity to, to raise those, those questions and to kind of shepherd that process as a member of the Planning Board. So we want to keep moving forward, but also, you know, we're, you know, we're, we're ready to, to be very, very judicious about this.
Okay, yeah, my, 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 my general concern is the time needed to engage the residents. And, you know, obviously, summer is a difficult time to get anyone's attention. So it, it's really, it's just getting it out within the public and having them understand it and providing a, providing enough time for, for that component. That's, that's it. But I won't, I won't believe at the point.
No, we, we hear, we hear you loud and clear. And, and, and quite frankly, that's why we weren't at the annual Town Meeting, for that exact, that exact reason. So we'll see where we stand as we get, excuse me, closer to the date.
Great, thank you.
So another, one more quick bit of breaking news. So everyone, I think, is familiar with the 711 Randolph Ave 4B case that was decided back in, in 2017, was appealed to the Housing Appeals Committee, was appealed by the town to the Superior Court, was then appealed further to the Supreme Judicial Court. That decision from the SJC just came down this morning, not in the town's favor. So, so, so that project is, is, is for all intents and purposes approved. So that's what I've got for now. It just happened today. So what we need to do is, is take a look at that decision, take a look at the decision in light of the ATC's decision, and, and kind of what conditions on the original approval kind of remain versus what were wiped away. But we're going to be, you know, moving into a, a stance of having to deal with, you know, going through the building permit process and going through the construction process of this project. Supreme Judicial Court is, is the end of the road in the Commonwealth. So it's, I, I, I have some, some correspondence from our attorneys that I haven't had a chance to look at yet, but I think we're all obviously kind of disappointed in the decision. We think that we made the right legal arguments, but they just didn't fly. So I will, I will forward that decision along to the board, just for your reference. But, you know, we're going to, I think, you know, my, my stance as, as the Planning Director and as someone that's going to have to be involved in, in this project is, is just making sure that, you know, all the conditions that, that are in that, that HSA decision and, you know, all of the processes that we need to go through for a major construction project are, are followed and are, you know, being as impactful to the town and to the neighborhood as possible. But that's, it happened today, breaking news. So I don't have anything else new to report. I have to review the decision myself. I haven't had a chance to do it. But, Meredith, did I have anything else? I don't know if we talked about anything else. Oh, you're on mute.
No, I, I think that was it. I think everything else is on our agenda that we're going to discuss. But please feel free to jump in if you think of anything.
Yeah, I think, I think that we're, we're hard at work on a lot of other things. Well, we'll have some more, some more things to discuss in the coming weeks, but that's it for now.
That's great. Okay, thank you, Tim. And with that, we can now move to Citizens Speak, if anyone would like to speak. Also, Josh Lee is in the attendees list. If we could maybe move him into the panelist also. I'm not seeing any hands. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak this evening? All right, John Cohane, I see. If you could unmute yourself and we could bring John Cohane.
Hi.
Hi, John.
Hi.
Welcome.
Hi, thank you. I didn't know if this was the only time to speak. I actually wanted to speak to the, to the RFP, the zoning RFP. Should I wait, or is this the only time?
No, you can speak at, at either time, now or when we get to the agenda item.
I, I just assume, wait for it then, thanks.
Okay, great, thank you, Sean.
Thanks.
Okay. Any other hands from anyone else? I'm not seeing any hands up. Anyone seeing any hands that I'm not seeing? Okay, with that, we can move to old business then. And it is 719, so we can go, go forward with review of the decision of the language for 34 Milton Hill definitive subdivision. And I see Ned Corcoran in. If we'd like to invite Ned, representing the applicant.
Hello?
Ned, yes?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I'm wondering if, like, oh, there I am. I guess I'm not going to be a panelist. If it would be helpful, I, I did submit a proposed decision for review of the board. If the board finds it helpful, I could share a screen and bring the decision up in front of us. If there are any requested changes, we could make them as a red line right in front of us. But I'll leave that to, to you.
Ned, I, I'm promoting you to panelist. I, I had just given you permission to talk, but once you're on the panel, I think you should be able to share your screen.
Ned, why don't you go ahead and just bring, bring that up, just in case anyone has questions? And if you wouldn't mind just giving the update to, to since when we last met, particularly involving the, the cobblestone, which I think is great, and the discussion on the railing.
I'm actually going to ask you to invite Jim DeSelle to speak to those points. I know that he's been back and forth with, with Josh Wild and with Tim.
I, I think Jim can speak if he, if he wants to.
Yep, not a problem. Can you hear me?
Yes, Jim, thank you. Go ahead, please.
Okay. After speaking with Cheryl and JD Wild, we came to an agreement on, instead of just using granite, vertical granite curvings, which JD didn't want his driveway to look like a, a road, we came up with the idea of using cobblestones. And we put together a, a detail showing the cobblestone at the typical four-inch reveal. Cheryl requested that we increase that to a six-inch reveal. So we changed the detail in the plan to put a six-inch reveal, but it's going to be more of a cobblestone style edging, so it'll look more like a driveway as opposed to the straight stark vertical granite curving. And then the railing, which will be along the wall where it's over 30 inches high. JD doesn't have a design yet, but he's working with his iron guy right now to design. And we, we foresee a picket-style wrought iron type fence that you can actually see through. So you, you, if you're driving down, you typically won't notice it as much. I'm assuming like a black wrought iron or iron-type fence. But we don't have the exact design yet. If the board, you know, wants to have pre-approval of that, once it's designed, we can shoot it before the board and make sure it's what everyone's thinking it is. And, and then we changed the detail that Cheryl wanted on the wall. We're going to have at least a minimum six-inch reveal on the, the wall for safety, safety reasons. And then I believe that's everything that was asked to be modified on the plans.
Great, thank you, Jim. Were there any questions regarding those items from any of the board members?
Meredith, I don't, I don't have a question. Hi, Jim, how are you? This is Sean. Yeah, I, I just looking at the detail, the detail, I acknowledge that the detail indicates cobblestone. It actually still shows the shape of what typically is the image of, of granite. But I know your intention. Anyhow, just for the benefit of the board and at the benefit of you, I just wanted to make sure that you, you recognize that too. It doesn't show the image of a cobblestone, but I know that's what you've noted.
I could show you, I can send a picture along. We can include it.
You don't, you don't have to. There were photos that were given to us. We saw photos of a drive, cobblestones on it. Again, I'm just mentioning it in the event that someone else asks the question. So that's, I'm, I'm, I'm good with it.
Maggie or Rich, any comments or questions?
No, I think it's an appropriate change for this location. All good.
I would agree. I, I think it's aesthetically, it will be much more appropriate for, for this particular setting.
I also feel the same way, Meredith. I shouldn't have said that. I, I, I think it's, I think it's a, you know, it's a beautiful way to, to finish a, a road or a drive.
So, and I, I would feel more, I, I would feel comfortable approving this. And just with the pre-approval that we, that we ask, that we do get to review the, the final design of the railing.
I think that's fine.
That's fine. We can add that. Okay. So with that, is there any other discussion or any other comments? Or anyone from the public who would also like to comment? I don't know if there's anyone else. Any hands? I'm not seeing any. Okay. So with that, if I could ask for a motion to approve?
Meredith, before, can, can, can we just include in that motion to authorize the Planning Director to sign the decision and the plans on behalf of the board?
I was just going to, yes, absolutely. Is there anyone who would like to make that motion? Of approval of the subdivision as written?
Meredith, I'll make that motion.
And subject to the approval of the rail design and that we are authorizing, Tim?
Yes.
On behalf of the Planning Board, great. Okay, is there a second?
Yep, my second it.
Great. Then all in favor, Maggie?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay. Thank you so much. That's great.
Thank you. Thank you all for your support here. It's been terrific.
Looks a good project.
Up sharing and you can have your screen back.
Great, thank you so much.
All right, enjoy the rest of the summer. I'm not sure that I will be before you until sometime this fall, but really enjoy, enjoy the summer. It'll be gone before we know it, unfortunately.
I know.
You tune in.
All right.
Bye-bye, take care. Thank you. Okay. And so as we mentioned, we are going to, I think, defer the Walcott Woods special permit amendment. But let's do, try to get a date where we can post a meeting and, and have that voted and approved once we can get together with Cheryl. That okay with everybody? Sound good?
Sure.
Okay, great, great. All right. The next is scheduling a public forum for the Milton Village Final Design Guidelines. We've received a final draft, so I think we're in a pretty good position now that we can, we can really show a final draft to the public and have a public forum on this. And it would be nice to, to see if we could get it on. We might need more than one public forum, you know, depending on how it goes. But the meeting August 11th. Is that good for people, if everyone's going to be here? To hold that public forum and, and invite as many, you know, do outreach to as many people to, as we can, to, to review and to see if there's anything else that we want to add. But I think that would be nice if we could get these guidelines approved and finalized, because we do have some projects that I think are in the works, and it would be really nice to have the guidelines in place before any of the next projects come forth.
Meredith, I'll, I'll be, I'll be attending the meeting on the 11th if that's, if you're trying to get an understanding for who will be here and who won't. I'll be here.
Okay, Maggie?
And I, I too will be here. That's not a problem.
Rich, is that a good date for you to have a public forum on the Milton Village Design Guidelines?
I'm sorry, can you, what was that date again?
Sorry, August 11th.
Hold on. I, I'm just looking, I guess.
Sure, I know.
I'm pretty sure I'm back. So my son is 12, he's going to Cooperstown, and I believe we're back right before that. I just, yeah, I don't want to miss it. I, I believe we're back that day, so, but I can, I will find out. My wife has it.
All right, Tim, does that sound like a good date to shoot for?
I didn't even look at my calendar, because quite frankly, doesn't really matter. I'm probably in town, so I'll be there.
Unless you'd rather move it to the second meeting in August.
No, no, because I, because I, I think, I think the way that the board should approach this is, is to have the public forum, you know, see if there's any additional feedback from the public. And then either in that second meeting in August, or even the first meeting in September, you know, have one final, you know, discussion, and then hopefully approval of those guidelines as, as a document the Planning Board approves. So, you know, I think, you know, the sooner we get the public forum done, you know, and, and, and that, and that second meeting can be a kind of, you know, final additional, you know, opportunity if folks aren't able to make a forum, to come and, and, and take a look at the guidelines and offer their comments.
And that might be a good idea to schedule that in, you know, early September, just to make sure everyone, we've.
Yeah, I, I think, I think that's fair.
Involved, okay.
And also, just Meredith, that day is good.
Oh, good, okay, great. All right, Tim, so why don't we plan on scheduling?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll run that by Dawson and Flinker. And, and if they have any strong feelings about a date, I will let you guys know. But I told them that I would kind of get, get your dates first, and then they would work around them.
Great, great, that's, we definitely need them to be present, so that, let's check with them. That sounds good. So, all right. And next on our agenda, we have the discussion of the East Milton zoning RFP. And John, if you would like to come back and would you like to speak in advance? Or would you like the board to speak? First, we welcome you.
I'll wait for you to speak. Thanks.
Okay, great. Great, John. Um, so has everyone been able to review? I thought Josh did a, actually, Tim, do you want to just introduce this? You, I should let you just introduce first.
Yeah, so, so Josh and I worked on this. I, I, I'm pretty sure Josh did most of the work. Just based on, and and this was something just to sort of give a skeleton of of what a procurement document would look like. Or the master plan implementation committee to give them an idea of of what, you know, the the universe of possibilities were. For for what this would, what this process would entail and and really the 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 main kind of portions. Of of this, this is, it's a little bit of a different process than say, you know, I'll use, I'll use the sort of the East Milton Working Group as an example. Which was the process to be. Worked with Judy Barrett's. Company on. That, that was more of a planning exercise. A lot of really intensive discussion about. Kind of, quite frankly, abstract issues that kind of started to coalesce into into more of a concrete vision. The, you know, the, the process that we're looking to engage in here is really more. I, I would say technical in terms of drafting zoning language. Zoning language is, is the law, so it's, it's legal language. It's, it's less. Kind of, you know, philosophical discussions over what our vision for the built form is and more, you know. Here's where the rubber hits the road, you know, how tall do we want these buildings? How deep do we want the setbacks? What sort of, you know, public realm improvements we want to come with, with any, any redevelopment, so. You know, it really is trying to take that, you know, the, the communities and the towns' vision for the built environment for this district. And and implementing it via, you know, land use regulation. So the, the, the RFP, the, the, the draft that that we put together kind of lays out the, the kind of the phases that a consultant is going to have to sort of do. And, you know, phase one is review the existing documentation. So the existing business. And then all of the other plans that we've done, both in East Milton and townwide in in the recent past, master plan, housing production plan. The East Milton Working Group Final Report. The Urban Land Institute Technical Assistance Report. That was kind of the, the forerunner of all of this. The local rapid redevelopment plan that we did for East Milton Business District. All of these have. A role in, you know, we, we did outreach for all of those processes. People had a chance to chime in and provide their input. And so, you know, a review of those documents is the first phase that any consultant is going to take. You know, the, the, the second part is. Is going to draft, you know, language, you know, based on on those, on on those documents and, you know, we're using the. The Barrett Report from East Milton Working Group as kind of. A launching pad. And and the, the, the reason I say that is because we've already done planning work and we don't want to not, not use it. You know, we believe it's, it's real work that was done and provided real input. And so just as a basis for, okay, this is right now our best idea of what, you know. You know, I, I hesitate to use the word consensus because I don't, I think we agree that there wasn't really a consensus, but it was at least. You know, the, 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 the subject of a lot of discussion and debate. And let's see what that plan looks like in zoning language. And then, and then we talked as a board, you know, my, my, myself and 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 Josh will provide our input. And we'll obviously want to get input from, from the public, both through standalone public forums. Through other means, whether it's surveys or webinars or, you know, email communication. And then also at the planning board, which, which are always public meetings and and public comment is always welcome. And and we kind of start to mold that language to kind of fit what, what we're, what we're ready to do in East Milton. And so, you know, there's, I, I, I know there's a lot of debate and a lot of, you know, a little bit of divisiveness around the, the conclusions in the Barrett Report. But, you know, you have to start somewhere. But I think what, what the RFP tries to do and, and, you know, and and the grant that we got kind of earmarks a significant portion of, of the budget towards. Public meetings and community outreach, specifically because, you know, the, the Barrett process did not end in a nice, clean kind of. Throw parade and and do this thing. And, you know, there's still some, some issues that I think are are up for debate and up for discussion. We want to have a starting point, but also we want to leave plenty of time and opportunity to to continue those discussions. So, you know, it's, like I said, it's really the skeleton of, 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 of a thing. I think one thing that especially we want to. Think about and and have a little bit more consultation with public about is, you know. We, we heard concerns, you know, when, when the board was, you know, discussing approving the matching fund. You know, about, you know, the timing and the pacing of all this. You know, we've got, we've got, well, less than two years now, but almost two years minus two weeks. To to kind of complete the deliverable for this under this grant program. And so, you know, we don't want to, we don't want to waste any time, but also I think there's plenty of time to to kind of do this the right way. And to really mold a engagement strategy that works for the people that we're trying to engage with. And so I, I think, you know, making sure that the RFP reflects, you know, it's not just us saying we're going to have, you know, three meetings, they're going to be on this date, this date, and this date, you know. Come if you can make it. I mean, we want to sort of do the type of outreach that people are going to be able to actually engage with. And and it's not just meetings, it's, you know, because we do want to hear from folks that maybe, you know, are not available in the evenings or. You know, have other, other priorities, but still want to have their voices heard. So, you know, we want to consider alternative means of outreach and input. So I, I think that's one major thing that we want to make sure that we're very deliberate about in crafting this. And then, you know, quite frankly, you know, it's, it's the board's project, so. If there are things that you want to make sure a consultant does, if there are things that you don't want the consultant to do. You know, it's, it's all up for grabs. You know, the thing that I'll say is we, we did our best to, to estimate, you know, the, the cost of this, of this thing. So the, the, the way that, you know, we're, we're going to try to do this is, you know, put it out to firms that. Think are, are good, that have done this type of work before. And 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 see what they come up with in terms of 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 price because the project, the, the grant is, Josh, it's a forty thousand dollar grant, right? Or it's a forty thousand dollar project with.
The, with a match, yeah.
With, with, with the ten thousand dollar match. So. We, we're, we're, under procurement law, we're obligated to get three, three quotes from reputable qualified firms. We don't necessarily have to go out and do a full central register, you know, advertising the newspaper. Thing, but all that being said is, I, I, I think we want to identify firms that have done this work before. And and really put out on the street a procurement document that includes all the things that we need to include. So I just want to kind of put it out there that. We're going to get prices back eventually from firms and if they're more than forty thousand dollars. The planning, we may want to talk about, you know, whether the planning board is prepared to put some budget behind, behind that. I can't make the decision for you. I would, I would hope that. You know, we're not talking about an eighty thousand dollar job where we've got to put a ton of money behind it, but there may just be some gap funding. You know, because, you know, we did our best to kind of use other budgets that we've, we've seen both in town and from other towns. But, you know, at the end of the day, it really depends on what the board puts into the document in terms of what it wants to see. And I think, you know, we really should be, you know, thinking in terms of getting the best possible. Project out of this rather than, you know, let's whittle down the scope of work so that, you know, pay with it with free money. But it may not be an issue. Maybe everything comes back, you know, nice and tight and and that way, but. Hopefully everyone had a chance to take a look at it. It's, like I said, it's a little bare bones. We can flesh it out however you all want. And and I think again, sort of the outreach strategy is something that I think we're going to want to be super clear on because it's, it's a real big priority. There's a lot of firms that are in this business that do it really well. And 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 I think, you know, it's, it's not, it's not something that is, is totally out of left field to to say we want to have a rigorous community outreach process. So that's all I've got for now. Josh, I don't know if I missed anything. I'm, I'm now, I'm, I'm almost one hundred percent. And I supervised over a shoulder.
So just to say that also the, the, the master plan implementation committee in, in approving the, the matching funds, we're also very. Intentional about the committee outreach components of it being very robust. So, so there's definitely allyship between this, the planning board and the master plan implementation committee on. Making sure this reaches the most essential people that, and the most sort of valuable community feedback that we can get.
Tim, thanks for, for that and Josh, thank you for yours too. I, I. My own opinion is. This needs to be done right. And I'll always be an advocate for prudent spending of any funds that the town uses. But this is a really important piece of work. And i- if we happen to find that that allocation of dollars, you know, isn't enough. For the right services, then, you know, I, I'm, I'm of the opinion, we need to get this done right. We, we should not. Be short sighted. This is too important. So we'll see what we get back and I, I will. I, I will, you know, remain in the position of doing it right is more important than doing it cheap.
Agreed.
I, I, I did.
Did you? No, please go ahead and feel free to make any, any comments or anything that you feel like should be added or. Important.
I, I, you know, I definitely have, I definitely have a, a, a couple of questions and as I read through. I, I recognize that we're asking the consultant and I apologize, I'm going to bring it to where I was, to this particular section I was looking at. We're describing two options. And and I guess my first question is. The idea here is that we're asking the consultant to prepare regulations, zoning regulations. And my first question is, at some point, the zoning regulations that are going to begin with a consultant's. Work. Will eventually become zoning regs that we would adopt within the town?
Correct.
Okay. My, I have a second question. It, it does indicate here that we're asking the consultant. To include within both options, an attempt to be consistent with the final guidelines for the MBTA Community Zoning Requirements. Promulgated by the Department of Housing and Community Development. Now, that would suggest to me that we're. Making a commitment that we want design guidelines that. Include design based on the, on this program.
Yeah, so a- and and that's something that, you know, I was gonna, I was gonna, once we got into the discussion, I was going to flag as, as something that the board might want to talk about. So, you know, when. When we had briefed the board on the initial MBTA Communities Guidelines, one of the questions that, that got a lot of conversation was, you know. If we create one of these zoning districts, you know, does, does it have to be here? Can it be here? Can a portion of it be here? Can it be on a bus line? Can it be somewhere else? And so the, the, the guidelines as they stand right now, you know, fifty percent of your zoning district, of your compliant zoning district. Has to be within a half a mile of transit. The other fifty percent can be elsewhere in town. And so, you know, the thinking behind this kind of portion and and kind of requesting a consultant to do this thinking is, you know. If we are going to be doing new zoning for, for East Milton, you know, is it, you know. Does it work for that neighborhood for that to be one, one portion of, of a compliant district under the MBTA Community zoning? I don't think it's a commitment to say we're doing a portion of our MBTA Communities District in East Milton. I think it's more of, you know, we are, you know, we've been talking about doing new zoning in this district for a long time. This other program that we have to comply with has come along, you know, is there a way for, for those two things to be consistent with each other? And if it's not, then, then it's not, we don't do it. But I, I, I think we, you know, when we were drafting this, we wanted to, you know, have the folks that were coming up with the first draft of the zoning. To, to make an effort to show us a product that, that was consistent with the MBTA Community zoning. The other thing in there too is also, Chapter forty R. Forty R district was actually, you know, floated as a concept when we were talking about the Falcone Project, which is kind of one of the things that kicked off this whole discussion. You know, with the ULI tap and then the Barrett Report. A forty R district is basically a, a multifamily district that includes a certain portion of affordable housing. And it, it's, it's a way to get significant numbers of affordable housing, up to twenty to twenty-five percent. With, with zoning that we draft rather than forty B projects that come in from whoever. And there's also a cash element to that. We get a certain amount of money from the state per unit that we, that we permit. So this is another program that again, you know, because we've been talking about zoning, these are two programs, one, which is, which is compulsory from the state. And one, which is kind of incentive based from the state, but I think we wanted our consultant to at least, you know, take a look at and see if it's something that we could kind of find to be palatable. Because. You know. We, we may decide that we want to go with just the straight special permit process like in Milton Village, in which case. That's totally, that's totally, you know, within bounds, but I think taking the opportunity to have a, you know, professional people drafting zoning. We wanted them to take a look at that. There's no commitment to any of this stuff. It really is. Ultimately, the board's decision to do whatever, but we just wanted to sort of put stuff on the table at the outset and then have the option to take it off.
Okay. My, my, my view of the, the MBTA program, Tim, is it is an incentive program. That's my view of it, because effectively you're incentivized. To prevent the loss of funding by committing to the program. So I see it not as compulsory. I see it as an incentive program. That's my own point of view. And I, and I do feel like we should be careful. Because the density as a result of that program is, could be problematic for the town. We, we have spent plenty of time talking about our lack of ability to provide services, educational services. You know, to the, to the, to the children that we're trying to educate in the town. So I'm just, I'm a little concerned with respect to that. I, I, I understand why it's in here. We want to understand if it was, if it was to be applied to this, to this area, you know, could it be applied and what, what might the consultant, you know, provide us? But I, I, I just, I do have some concerns that the board's going to have to think long and hard and engage the public. With those elements of planning in that area. And I'll, I'll finish with this, with respect to the MBTA program. I think the town has a responsibility to do a, a cost benefit analysis, you know, what is the cost? And what is the benefit in, in financial, in financial terms, you know, for the town and for the residents?
Yeah, I, I, I don't disagree with any of that. It really, you know, and and I hate, it's, it's annoying and and I think every, every planner in the hundred and seventy-five MBTA communities. We don't have the final guidelines yet, so it's, it's really tough to start to do the planning and the analysis without knowing. You know, how those guidelines are going to change based on what, you know, the initial draft that we saw it is. So. You know, we're all kind of waiting with bated breath on, on that, but I think once, once we get those. I, I think it's, it is going to be crucially important to have those discussions about, you know, is this something, you know, how, how are we gonna, how are we going to engage with this? And and how is it going to affect, you know, all of, all of the municipal services that we offer? I think, and that's consistent throughout, you know, almost every town in, in the MBTA service area. They're saying the same things.
Anyone else from the board like to speak on this? Rich or?
Yeah, so I'd like to hear from Rich since he's a neighbor and he.
Yeah. So I'd like to hear from Rich since he's a neighbor and he lives in the neighborhood. And I'd want to hear what he has to say.
Yeah, yeah, it's funny. I mean, by the time we get to this stuff, I probably won't be on the board, but I, but I will absolutely be in the meetings and probably be pretty vocal. Yeah, I, I, this is something that I, I mean, I'd like to see for a long time because I think, you know, to Sean's point, it's gotta be done very thoughtfully. But I think, you know, right, we need these things in our town or else the developers that are coming in, that, that, you know, a little, you know, look at the 40Bs, right? So how many conversations are we having with folks about design standards? We don't even have them. I really like what went on, what, what we put together in Milton Village. I think everybody in one of the last meetings that I was in talked about how those design standards came out pretty good. I was pretty excited about it. They're standards. They're not like, they're not zoning law, but um, I, I can't wait to start doing some of that in East Milton. What I, so what I would like, and, and my understanding, Tim, this is a long process. And so we're, we're starting the process now, knowing that it's going to take considerable amount of time. And, and I think you mentioned this, this stuff needs to be voted by the planning board, and that's going to be tons of meetings, lots of open meetings. And ultimately it needs to be like, was, it's probably, I would assume in two terms about a town meeting. So this is going to be a long process. But I like the fact that we're starting it now. What I would suggestion as a suggestion is to somehow, and maybe you already have it, Tim, put together like a, like a timeline of when we think all these things, even, you know, potentially those future meetings in the end. When do we see, what's the big timeline here? Maybe share that. So like the different neighborhood communities, things like that can look at it and say, okay, because I know there's some worry, right? When you start talking about doing these things right now, we're in the middle of the summer. And I think like everybody else on this board, you get worried when, when town officials talk about stuff in the summer because there's, there's nobody around, right? In the summer. But that's not what you're doing here. I know we're just starting the process. And so, but what I do think would be helpful is getting a nice timeline out there just so folks can get a good look at it and say, okay, this makes sense. Or hey, maybe this part doesn't. And I'm just thinking maybe that'll help out a little bit.
Yeah, we can absolutely do that. And then we can have that prepared for the next meeting. You know, a lot of, you know, a lot of it'll be, you know, speculative because I, you know, it, it's, it's based on our own experience of these processes. You know, and, and we'll want to make sure that, you know, whoever we bring on board is, is kind of doing things at the pace that they're going to be able to, you know, produce a good product. But I think, you know, in really broad strokes, we can kind of, you know, back into, you know, at this, at this stage in 2023, we want to be at this point and kind of back, back into that. So we can, we can have a document like that ready for the next meeting or the next time we want to talk about this.
Yeah, awesome. That, I think that'd be great. And, and too, Sean was talking about the MBTA music. That, that one kind of scares me a little bit, obviously, right? But, you know, you, you were talking about a 40B that just got turned down. So we've got to start making headway in our town. I, I'm not a fan of doing it all in one place. Some, I've said this before, I'm a huge fan of spreading it around town. We as a town should get together and, and figure it out, not one group of people. I, I'm a supporter of, I'm not afraid of them doing the work and coming to us with their thoughts, opinions, because to your point, Tim, we get to make the final decision and we can take it or leave it. However, you know, the people will jump in and out of the process and could get a little worried. So it'll just be on us to make sure we're, you know, documenting this stuff and putting it online and bringing people along for the ride. Because if this takes the next two years, you know, a year and three quarters from now, somebody's probably going to see it for the first time. You could get worried about something or somebody that just bought a house. So we'll just have to do our due diligence. But yeah, sounds good. Thank you, Maggie, for it.
That's great, Rich. Thank you. Great comments. I'm Maggie.
So my questions were sort of along the line of Sean's, and I think I talked about it at the last meeting too, that, you know, words are important. And when I was reading through the RFP, the words kind of stuck out to me that, that, you know, that we want to respond to the goals of the master plan. So one response, one question I had was the master plan was written seven years ago. And a lot has happened in those seven years and in the square in particular. You've got the Falcone project and now the, the Granite Ave project. So when we reference, you know, the master plan, we're, we're referencing something and things that aren't there, but we know are coming. So I'm just a little bit nervous about referencing the master plan because we haven't taken it off the shelves and dusted it off and looked at it. And again, I am, you know, one option in the RFP, it says one option should generally, generally correspond with the vision plan for East Milton in the Barrett report. And I think I mentioned the last time that I wasn't super excited about that vision plan. So I wouldn't be super excited if the RFP, you know, if the consultant came back with and spent all this time thinking that that's kind of what we wanted. And up, and the second option would be to enable the 40R. And so I know I'm new and I don't know all the particulars off the top of my head, but I did a little research on the 40R. And that kind of makes me a little bit nervous. If I lived in East Milton, I'm kind of always putting myself, if I lived, you know, where the Costellas lived on Mechanic Street. And I, I'm looking at this and I look up the rules for 40R. And it says that the district requires a minimum density of eight units of fit, single family homes, 12 units per acre for townhouses and 20 units per acre for condos. And so that 40R is actually, I think, more dense than the MBTA, which requires 14 units per acre. And along the 40R, again, if, if my research is wrong, you know, please let me know. It says 20% or more of the homes developed must be deemed affordable. In other words, they'll be occupied by families or individuals who make less than 80% of the area wide median income. And, and I get that, but what happens if we already have existing residents in this district make over that income level? And I would think that if we are redoing East Milton and we're trying to attract all different types of people to live there, we may be attracting people, some older people who might have higher income and they want to live in, in their town in which they raise their kids. But they might go to Florida or the Cape, and so they might have some higher income. And so I wouldn't want to, you know, make, I don't know, make it so we can't allow all people to move in. So I'm just a little bit nervous about the wording on this RFP. And especially since to your point that we do have a budget. I would hate for us to spend all this time on a consultant. You know, and the consultant, you know, reads this, um, the description and says, oh, they wanted to generally correspond with the vision. And then that's what they do. And then we're like, actually, no, that, we hate your plan. And now we don't have any money to do another plan. And my fear is that that once we put something in, you know, on paper, then that kind of becomes a reference point. So like you've talked about, and we reference all the time, the Barrett report, and that's on the town website. And we say to residents, go look at the Barrett report. But then we've just said tonight, there wasn't consensus on that Barrett report. But here it is for all people to kind of be looking at, including developers. So we're making documents available that really there's no consensus on. So I'm just afraid that, that if I was responding to this RFP, I would think that my goal is to produce something that maybe we're not all on board with.
So I, I, I see Cheryl and Rich have their hands up, but I, I just wanted to just, um, respond to a couple of those comments, Maggie. They're, they're, the Barrett report tried to achieve consensus. I, I don't think that it, it got 100% there. But it, but it is the, it is, it is the work product that we spent a considerable amount of time and effort on. And a lot of people were involved with it. So it's not, it's not the thing, but it's something. And I think the, the reason that we kind of framed the RFP in the way that, that we did was because the, the, the vision in the Barrett report is the closest thing that we have to a consensus. So rather than ask a consultant to come in and basically start from square one and, and effectively redo the Barrett process to try to find a consensus based vision for, for development in East Milton. Who knows if we ever get there? I think what we were thinking was, let's use this as, as a frame of reference. Here's something that you can, you can build some language around. And then the, the one thing that I want to be like 100% clear on is, you know, the RFP is looking for someone to create a draft of zoning. At which point it's up to us. If, if it's too much, then we change it. If it's too little, then we change it. It really is getting that draft out there and giving something that people can actually look at. And here's what the zoning could look like. What do you think of it? Because we don't have that yet. And, you know, it's really tough for people to, you know, the zoning is, is, is eventually get the, the thing that the developers look at. You know, people look at the Barrett report now because it's the only thing that we've got. Once we've got zoning, that's going to be the reference point for everybody. And so, you know, we want, we want people to be able to intelligently and coherently comment on zoning by having language in front of them. And so, you know, if it starts off with the vision of the Barrett report and ends up with something else, then, you know, mission accomplished. That's what we're here for. So I, I don't want anyone to sort of, you know, misinterpret things. It's like we're having the the consultant produce something that's going to go straight to town meeting. It's going to go straight to you and, and by extension, straight to the community for that discussion of like, okay, here's what we think is good, here's what we think is bad. But it's really just getting something down on paper first. So that, that's, I just wanted to clarify a little bit of that. I don't know if Cheryl and, and Rich have other.
Yes, I, I wanted to welcome Cheryl. I saw you come into the meeting. So welcome. And if you would like to speak, please go ahead.
Thank you. Sorry, I joined late and I'm on my phone and in the car. So I don't have my video on at the moment, but I should be able to join at home by my computer soon. I just wanted to make a comment a little bit on what Maggie said about the master plan. You know, the master plan was updated seven years ago. Yes. It took a two-year process and I think 125 or $150,000 of investment in the consultant who led that process. And that was the first time that it had been updated since the 1970s. So we talk about seven years. It's like a short period of time compared to how many decades it was before that. And, you know, having been on the implementation committee since the planning board adopted that plan and the town meeting formed the committee, you know, there's been a lot of progress made. And, you know, the plan itself has, I, I'd say a timeline, if you will, for implementation that are short term, midterm and long term. And in the long term or even beyond the 10-year life of what was anticipated as the plan. So I think we're on course. And I, I don't think we should think that it's been on the shelf and needs to be dusted off. The committee's been meeting monthly for all these years, putting forth recommendations, soliciting consultants and so forth. And what I, and given that, I just want to give a little history, you know, with Milton Village because it's really is a good example for East Milton, I think. In Milton Village, you know, we engaged a consultant. It was a matching grant with MAPC, so the Metropolitan Area Planning Council. And they, they led a planning process and then they drafted zoning. And that zoning went through the work on the master plan implementation committee in terms of review and, and really in terms of build out analysis and traffic and parking analysis. And then it went to the planning board and the planning board went through a whole nother process with it and revised it even further with some further analysis. So it, this is really, I think, this RFP and the scope of work that Tim and Josh outlined, I think is right. And I think it's, it's a consistent with the process that was used. And I think people feel was successful in Milton Village. And I think it'll be interesting too, to see what some of the consultants' recommendations are in terms of scope of work and, and public engagement. But the things that I think are really important from that Milton Village experience, and I know Meredith was a, a part of this as well, even though she wasn't on the, either the committee or the board at the time, was really, you have to have something on paper because then you can start doing the test analysis. That's how you can do the build out analysis and you can analyze whether it's a comp, the, what you're putting in there as parameters or actually accomplishing what you want to accomplish. Because in the end, zoning has a purpose, yes. And then zoning provides for approved uses. And, you know, and I think everyone agrees that the commercial district's to benefit from mixed use kind of zoning. And then the question becomes, well, at what scale? And, you know, what the parking requirements should and could be. And the way you get at that scale is really start to put the dimensional requirements in. So I, I think that the build out analysis says, okay, what are the, what are those tools that control scale? Well, they're the allowed floor area that you're allowed to build, the height that you're allowed to build, the setbacks that you have, but then even step backs in the building themselves. And one of the things I sent to Tim is comments via email, when I didn't think I could attend at all tonight, was that, you know, some of the scale should be calibrated based on the kind of streets that's there, you know, the width of the street. This is what planning professionals do. They will calibrate their dimensional requirements per, because if you have a narrow street and a tall building, that has a canyon-like effect, right? And if you have a wide street and buildings set way back from the street with parking in front, that has a, 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 doesn't have a very pedestrian friendly feel to it. And so I really think that, you know, this next step is really important to advancing the work in East Milton. We've been working on the East Milton, as I said in our last meeting, a long time. And we need to move forward with it. There's still, we, we can't kind of spin our wheels. I think we have to do the process that's necessary to make the decisions that need to be made and then take it to town meeting eventually. You know, and see if they agree with the work that's been done. So I support the, the scope of work that's been outlined for those reasons. Thanks.
Cheryl, can I, this is, can I ask you a question? Because my, my experience doesn't date back on the planning board like yours does. When we issued the RFP for Milton Village and you, you've cited how successful you felt that process was, did we have the same language in that RFP as we have in this?
No, but we've learned from it, Sean. And we've included more in this one than we had in that one.
Yeah, I, I guess the, um, the, the, so we didn't include in that one a component that would have the chapter 40R, smart growth overlay district or, or I, I guess at that time, we weren't even aware of the MBTA communities proposition, right?
Yeah, the MBTA communities, what I would say about that is, you know, seeing how it would fit or not fit with what we've already been studying is what I see as important. You know, so whether, so what we could, let's just say that the work, if you're building on the work within the Barrett report, then you take a look at that work and you compare it to what the requirements in the MBTA communities. I mean, and by the time that this work begins, maybe there'll be further guidance like Tim said. But, you know, that, at, at least you have the professionals doing the analysis that says, look, this is very consistent with what planning work has already been done, or it's very inconsistent with planning work that's already been done. But at least we would have some analysis beginning, you know, that started that analysis.
Yeah, no, I understand that. I guess I have a, I, I have a, you know, an opinion that once a thought process is initiated, it's difficult to move off a thought process. And I think that's just true with anything in life. And once we begin this thought process of creating the kind of density that would be created in East Milton Square with what we're asking them to include. with what we're asking them to include within their options, I I I feel like it's 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 trending in that direction, the movie smothering towards that. I understand what has been said earlier by Tim. This is for the planning boards that, you know, to review and for the for the residents to contribute to. But, you know, I I I do understand Maggie's point of view, you know, if you're going to hire a consultant, let's make sure that what we're asking them for is what we're really committed to and what we want.
Yes, Rich, please go ahead.
Thanks. Yeah, so so just in going back a little bit for I got a few thoughts, sorry. So when we the I'll start with the Barrett report. So I'll be kind of blunt on my opinion there. I was one of the folks that, you know, obviously was on the board, played and voted for it. Let's do it. I I'm not thrilled with the outcome of it. I think the outcome is looks a little differently. And I don't mean the outcome of the layout or what the thinking of how East Milton should look. It's more, I mean, not not, I'm not on board with it, but I just it I I don't feel that the process was what I thought it was going to be. And so I do agree with Tim that says it's there. So, you know, it's what we got. We spent money on it. I agree with that. I, you know, back if we could go back in time, I'd probably take my vote away and not go forward with it. I just I don't think it was a good use of time and effort. It was extraordinarily long and it, you know, COVID hit at certain, you know, and things got stalled. And stuff was happening in the summer with nobody around. It just personally, I I'm not thrilled with what came out of it. The master plan, I have, you know, I wasn't on that, but I, you know, I could have said, everybody that puts all the time and effort into those things, that had to go through a public process, countless meetings, you know, in front of town meeting. And so, you know, we're in a point, I mean, my opinion is we point to that until somebody decides they want to bring something new to town meeting or change or advance something like a a different chapter. My feeling on East Milton is pretty unwavering. Sean, I have the same opinions as you. I'm very nervous about what's coming here. I will tell you, the 40B that we're looking at right now in East Milton, I mean, the conversation started, what, seven years ago on that? I was on the Eastfield Neighborhood Association at that time. And we spent as just citizens that didn't know anything about, you know, 40Bs. We spent a lot of time and effort, you know, getting the the neighborhood up to speed on it and educated and voices heard. And, you know, I know that there are some people that help, but there was not a lot of town support that came out and said, here's how you should be doing things or, you know, let's get in front of this as a town and take it on. It was a neighborhood thing for a year, for a couple of years, and it was pretty rough. And I will say that back then, I'm a little nervous about 40R conversations now because I, like Maggie, you said, I'm I mean, I read, I know a lot more about them. However, at least back then, there was a lot of us, I'm not going to speak for anybody but myself, that said, maybe that'll help. We need something here. We need something. And so I am a huge proponent of this something. I do think that if you look backwards, I was there through the process of the village. We had some tough meetings. Neighbors came in pretty upset, right? And there was a lot of back and forth. And I think we were really thoughtful and we, you know, we had a good process. I think people weighed in. I think, you know, developers that come into that neighborhood have a more clear picture of what we don't want and what we do want, and we being the town and the neighborhood. We don't have that in East Milton at all. I definitely don't want to say, hey, go look at the Barrett report because I'm not, again, don't want to speak for anybody in my neighborhood. But I don't know if there's anybody in the neighborhood that can say that's like, let's just adopt as is. It needs a lot more work and a lot more time. And I'd like to see that start happening. I'm not, I will go back to now what we're talking about here. I'm not so worried about the wording in an RFP. And again, I, you know, I've only seen the RFPs that we've put out. In my job, I put out RFPs constantly. I'm constantly responding to RFPs much larger than this type of thing. But like my feeling is usually I put things in RFPs of, you know, things that I want, things that I need. And what else could you think about? Because we want people to come in and give us ideas that we're not thinking about. The reality is we're the masters in our town of what we decide. And quite honestly, in the more near term, if we could put anything we want in this RFP, but there's going to be a process by which this person that wins is going to sit in front of us. And then we're going to give them some marching orders. And those marching marching orders could very well be, you know, I guess, Sean, like, I'm hoping that you say, hey, I'm worried about this. I want you to hear my thoughts about my worry. And all of us should say what we like and what we don't like and what we what we think and what we feel and would would like to see come of it. What I learned, and I don't mean any, you know, I don't mean this negatively about G Barrett, but I don't like, I didn't know enough, I think, to say to her, hey, here's what I want to see come of this. Or I want to have more part in the layout of, you know, the process. I think I'm I know more now, so I'd like to be more vocal as this goes on. And so my feeling is, I'm not too, I honestly, I don't really care what you guys put in the RFP. More is probably better than none. But when we pick a winner, I want to make sure they give us what we want and I want to make the process dialed in. So I guess that's just my feeling.
Excellent, Rich. Thank you very much. And Cheryl, I don't know if your hand is up from earlier or if you wanted to add to that.
Just wanted to add a couple of things. Meredith, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. I just on the on the cost and the and the scope down the road. One thing, when we think of this being maybe a two year process, we look at probably two years of budget. And again, just from the Milton Village experience, the we added scope and access budget from both the master plan implementation committee's budget and the planning board budget a number of times to add different studies that we felt were necessary. So I think I just, again, to think about that, this isn't the the only time we can consider the funds and the scope. Secondly, I just wanted to, one of the things Sean said, one of the things I think that we felt was very helpful, and I think Meredith, you mentioned this at the last meeting, that you recommended to build out analysis. One of the things we found in the build out analysis, we didn't have the funds actually at the time. I personally did the work, some of the work to fill in the gaps when we didn't have funds available. And I think what we all saw was, wow, some of this is actually bigger than we like and bigger than what we think will work. And so we want to scale it back. But until you do those, what I said was that sort of first draft or initial draft and set these tools which give you the scale, until you start to set them and test them, you really don't know what whether they're working or not. And so when it's just words on paper or just the goals, like what currently is design guideline or as guidelines in the MBTA community, until you really start to put the the numbers to it and then test them out on actual pieces of property, can you begin to see whether they're going to have the effect that you want to have or whether they're going to be overwhelming? And so, again, I think it's better to include the scope because you can do the analysis that helps informs the decision making.
You know, Cheryl, to respond to that, I we're not, we're not giving, I at least it appears to me, we're not giving much opportunity for the consultant to freelance what they would do with East Milton Square. When we ask for as much as we want included in the options, I think we're basically telling them, you know, this is, it is, is it is a density driven approach.
Could we, I think, to that point, Sean, could we say in here some language or a sentence or two that kind of gives a feeling of what we heard from East Milton? And I'm not saying tons of language, but just, you know, here's kind of the the sense of what the community sees this neighborhood looking like. Consider how you would, you know, I don't know, this, is there something we can, because because I can see Tim's point of saying, hey, I want them to consider it. What if they don't? And you're kind of saying the opposite, which is, but just as good. Yeah, but I want them to think freely because what if they come up with something, I'm not going to, I'm sorry, I'm adding words for you. What if they do come up with something really cool that we love? I don't know. Is there a way we could do both? I guess what I'm thinking. Throwing that out. Yeah. Oh, sorry. Let me say one thing. Sorry, Cheryl. I just want to, I will say this, Cheryl. One of the reasons why I think I just said it was a good process is I think it was because it was because of all the work you put in. Because I remember those days when you were toggling back and forth and showing us that was something that you did. And I know you spent countless hours doing it. And quite honestly, I don't even know if we're going to get this. And we probably won't get that level of detail here. It's going to cost us so much more money. But that is probably one of the reasons why it was a good process because we were able to see things and not just read it.
What would you have done differently with Milton Village? What 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 was missing from that RFP that you would put in now?
Cheryl, do you want to please?
Yeah, so we didn't initially have the build out analysis. And we didn't, and we added, once we had the built out analysis, we added a traffic impact update. So we didn't, and again, my comments to Tim were, I think we're going to need parking and traffic updates once we do the build out analysis. So, but I don't think we need it all in this RFP, Sean, because like when we did Milton Village, we started with a scope of work for a consultant, you know, beta. I mean, a consultant that's going to do the kind of work that we're looking for, writing zoning and doing the analysis is not going to be the one that would do the traffic and build out. And that's the same that happened in Milton Village. So we we had MAPC for the zoning and then we had beta for the parking and traffic. And and those, again, you know, we looked at different year budgets as well. I think that probably spanned three fiscal years, if I remember correctly. So I guess my my recommendation or suggestion would be that, you know, we start with the scope, which is broader than it was in Milton Village, yes. But it's in it's just information to help inform the decision. And I don't think, Sean, that it's prejudiced. Like I said, in Milton Village, we scaled it back because we we looked at what was recommended. And we said, you know what, we're not comfortable with that. And I think the same thing could happen here. If the state says to us, here's what we think you should do. And we analyze it and we say, we're not comfortable because we've analyzed it. That's a lot different than saying, we're not comfortable because we don't want to do it or we don't think it fits. Without without having done the analysis, I think we're in a far better position doing the analysis than not. And the analysis through the consultants rather than through me. Thank you.
One thing I I want to make sure everyone is is really crystal clear on is that, you know, we've got, we've got two ends of a spectrum in East Milton right now. And on on one end of the spectrum is projects that the community has been pretty vocal about not wanting. And and then they're out of scale and they're no good in terms of the 40B and the 440 Granite Ave project. You know, we received a lot of input on both of those projects about how they're they're not right for East Milton. And on the other end of the spectrum, we have the current zoning, which has yielded three new buildings in the past 30 years. No one statistically is building under the East Milton Business District zoning. And so the the alternative for the development community is 40B or site plant approval with variances. And and they're really calling the shots. And so in between those two poles is where we want to be with zoning. And so, you know, Sean, when when you say that it's a density exercise, I don't want to sound flip, but yeah, it is. Because we do need to have something that's more dense than what we have. But we have the opportunity through drafting our own regulations to find a density that we're comfortable with, rather than a density that a property owner or a developer are comfortable with. And so I think really that's the the fundamental purpose of doing this is not just for the sake of doing it. It's because you need to sort of put a line in the development community and say, this is what we want to see. Here are the regulations that are going to enable that. So you're not going to do a 40B. You're not going to go to the Board of Appeals for a bunch of variances. You're going to do this thing that is a community driven planning board and town meeting vetted set of regulations. And so I think, you know, we need to, we need to kind of accept that there is going to be a level of density greater than what exists now in East Milton zoning. But it will hopefully be a level of density that is below what we've already demonstrated is is not something that the community is comfortable.
Yeah, and Tim, I I understand the establishment of guidelines and why we would do it. As I said with my first comments, and I commented on the MBTA program, I think we have to be very careful because I'm not sure that adopting that program is the right thing for the town of Milton, you know. But I I understand your point and I I hope that the RFP doesn't become so restrictive that we don't get the the free thinking that I think both Rich and I are are hoping that the consultant can still do. So, you know, if 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 you feel strongly that the consultant will be, you know, can be not prejudiced as Cheryl said, and be open minded and be creative and be comfortable and not just be driven by, you know, the guidelines that have already been created, then I'll accept your leadership as the the right director.
I am not a leader here. You're the leader.
So you, listen, somebody wrote that RFP. It wasn't me.
Understood. But I I mean, I I think, you know, it's a fair enough point. And like I said, you know, we 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 put this together, you know, for something for the board to chew on. And I'm doing a lot of chewing, which is good, which is the whole point of the thing. Yeah, I I think it's a fair enough point. I what I would, you know, and we have all of these documents and they'll be part of the literature review that any consultant does. So, I mean, if 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 the board is more comfortable sort of softening and broadening that, I think that's fair enough. I just what what I don't want to see is, you know, the time and the effort and and, you know, you know, because there are people that that don't like the Barrett report. There are people that do. So it's 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 a resource and I'll call it a data point, you know, for for evaluating what is, what is the first step in sort of drafting these regulations? There are other data points out there. There are other plans that we produced. There is, you know, piles and piles of commentary from development projects that, you know, we'll want to have people take a look at. So I think I think there's a way to get them to bond by by altering that language. So I I think it's a fair enough point. So it really, you know, again, like I said at the beginning, it's up to the board. I just what what the other thing that I don't want to do is kind of reinventing already sort of gone through arduous processes of doing. And so I think using the plans that we've already got to their fullest extent is really important. But, you know, the the there's there's different ways of crafting these things. If if you have a really great idea of what you want to do, you craft a really tight RFP. If you really want someone to run wild, you do a broader one. And, you know, it sounds like we're kind of running wild is the form of the term. But it sounds like maybe that's something that the board is more interested in, having a consultant kind of spread the reach a little bit, you know, based on, again, these plans that we already have, you know, and again, the the commentary that we have on the other development projects. So I think, you know, there's two approaches and I think they're more valid. But I think, you know, I I would tend to, you know, not want to presuppose an outcome and and kind of hamstring a developer, you know, however that or a consultant, excuse me, you know, however that winds up looking in the RFP.
So I have a suggestion that of maybe a way we can handle this with, because I am grateful for Josh's work. He's done a great job, I think, trying to put together a really good RFP here. But what we could possibly do, and I don't, I don't know if we even if the board wants to pull up the document for the for the residents to sort of be able to see what we're what we're referencing or speaking about. But what we could possibly say is, thank you. That's great. You know, instead of saying one option should generally correspond with the and enable the vision plan for the East Milton Neighborhood Square, the the Barrett report, maybe we say one option should generally correspond with guidance from the master plan. A period. And then, but up above, you could still say two, you know, two options for mixed use development that correspond to the goals of the 2015 master plan. And maybe and say in in reference the East Milton Working Group without without being so strong and forceful that we're misguiding and saying, this is exactly what we want to see. Because it may not be what exactly what we want to see. There may be aspects, and I think there are a lot of really good things that are in it to be included. But maybe we soften that language to But maybe we soften that language to um, to be more adherent to our master, our town's master plan, um, rather than just that, that Barrett Report, which I think there's some things that conflict. Um, the conflict, the Barrett Report and the master plan, I think some of the language is um, that conflicts. Um, the other thing that I wanted to add is if we could put in, um, at the very top where you are background and project description, I was thinking, East Milton Square is a relatively densely developed historic residential neighborhood. I think we have to remember that this is part of a, this was a railway village. Um, it's a national historic district. Um, so I think giving context to that and maybe one of the data, um, maybe one of the documents that we could provide is that um, the reference, so that they can see that almost every house on Pier Street is a historic home, all but one, which is a renovated carriage house. So they can see what we're, what we're running up against and the close proximity. So I'm adding historic in there and then giving just some, some documentation on that, that historic railway village information, I think would be really helpful to anyone who's designing guide zoning. Um, so those just were the two things that I, um, if there's a way that we can soften that language of, of just that it's, that we're committed to implementing the Barrett Report, essentially. We don't, I don't think that's what our goal is. Um, and I guess I would look to the board on whether we really want our focus to be just a mixed use um, overlay zoning. Um, that would obviously, I, I think be a preference because I think you can cover a larger area um, with, with doing a mixed overlay zoning. I would be really concerned with, um, you know, if we do a 40R, it would really have to be, I think, a much smaller area. I, I think we wouldn't, we would not make as, as to the extent which um, the Barrett Report references um, in that mapping, that it would have to, it would be, a 40R would be a much smaller parcel. And I'd rather see, you know, I, I think our goal is that developers can come in and they don't have to look at parcel by parcel. They, they can look at, you know, they can look at things more generally. And I, I would be nervous the 40R. I would want it to be a much smaller um, district.
So. Yeah, I, just, I'll chime in. I, I agree. I agree with you on the 40R. Yeah, I mean, I'll just say again, I kind of said before, the 40R, I was, you know, if you go back four, four years ago, it sounded like a really good thought to a, oh my God, look at the 40Bs that are coming into our neighborhood and there's nothing you can do to stop them. Developers are coming in and saying, I'm going really, really high. And if you don't like it, coming back with a 40B. And the 40R is, I guess, a tool to put something in place. Maybe it's the, you know, maybe it's better than getting beat up with a six-story 40B or eighty units on an acre. It's funny, when we were talking about units per acre earlier, I'd take fourteen all day long. Right now, we're looking at eighty-five, sixty, hundred. I mean, it's, it's kind of ridiculous what you can put on one acre. Um, but yeah, I, I'm, I'm there with you. I don't, I, I guess I'm, I'm, the camp I'm in is, sure, if you want to give us your opinion on how a 40R would look here, fantastic. But if, if, if the outcome of this report is, you know, kind of ignoring who we are as a town and what they're learning, and then somebody just comes in and gives us an opinion on how to create a 40R and how big can you get and et cetera, et cetera, well, then I'm going to have the same feeling I had from the last report. I think we're not going to get what we're paid for. And so I, I, I don't, I don't want to limit, but I also, I want the, whoever goes after this to understand that, you know, we're not just trying to see how a 40R could fit here. Does that make sense? I mean, I, I, I don't like the idea of a 40R right now, but I guess, could somebody give us an opinion on it? Sure.
I just wanted to um, make a comment here. Um, you know, Sean mentioned earlier about a cost benefit analysis. You know, I think um, that would be useful if, even if you said, okay, there's a 40R that's small. I mean, I think we learned a couple of years ago on the board that a, a 40R could be as small as one parcel. Um, if, if there's a 40R for a small area and then there's a mixed use for a larger area, could we do both? I mean, it's something that I think it would be worth talking about. And the cost benefit analysis, like when we looked at Milton Village and we said, we looked at how much uh, commercial tax revenue was being generated. And uh, the two largest taxpayers in, in Milton Village are eighty-eight wharf and uh, extra space storage. And so if you think about a business district, I mean, you could have uh, uses like extra space storage that pay a lot of tax, or you can have a mixed use like eighty-eight wharf that pays a lot of tax and you get a first floor commercial and you get residences up above. And so, you know, what does that tax look like? You know, one of the things about um, the mixed use is generally the units are smaller. It's less likely that you're going to have large numbers of children. That Sean mentioned schools, you might have, uh, you know, we would need to look at whether there's uh, any increase in services from police, fire, DPW for water, sewer, what have you. But the cost benefit analysis, I mean, our commercial districts do not generate much in the tax revenue. Can they generate more? And it, you know, what level of zoning is comfortable and how much tax revenue do we get out of that? And so it seems to me we should, we should get the analysis before we take things completely off the table.
And, and I do think um, we should encourage more commercial. We always hear that we don't have enough commercial space and, you know, through the pandemic, fortunately, you know, the residents of Milton were very kind to me and my business. And, and it shows that people want to shop and, and buy locally. So maybe even looking at not just first floor commercial space, but maybe second floor um, space. You know, someone came in um, the other day to the nursery and she was a CPA, CPA, and she was looking for um, additional office space. Um, and same with my sister's a psychologist and she needs some office space. Um, so not big units, um, but smaller, um, you know, smallest, smaller space for our residents who are professionals and want to stay local.
Well, just, just to try to move this along to, to reach some um, conclusions on this particular topic. I, I don't think I'm the only one that has expressed an interest in seeing some softening in the language of the RFP. Um, I, I think, I think I'm only one member that has said it and I think others have as well. Um, I would like to see something that's a little softer. And I understand Cheryl, what you, um, what you just explained. It, it's going to be valuable to see what could be accomplished. I just, I just, um, you know, I think Rich even referred to or referenced what I had said to, you know, freelance or free think. But I just, I feel softening this would be better.
Could, could I make a quick suggestion? I mean, it, because I, it might be tough or um, and I'm not going to lie, it seemed like we were going to get out early tonight. The, the agenda was pretty minimal. Um, I mean, I don't know when this has to be done, but could uh, Tim, you and Josh, like, look at this under that um, with the thinking of, and again, I don't want to speak to you, Sean, because this is my, my words would be, like you want to be able to say, hey, think of these things. You also want somebody to come in with their own opinions and thoughts. Um, I know that's kind of talking out of both sides of my mouth, but is there, do you think? I don't know. Do, do you agree with that, Sean? Or are you, are you thinking you just kind of, should we cross things out?
No, I, you know, the, the, the way I read it, I think it, it um, requires the options to include uh, components. And, and, and that's, that's how I, that's how I read um, the directive uh, to those that are going to view this RFP. And uh, um, so, and, and I understand Cheryl's point. Uh, but I also feel like we're, we're uh, creating a, creating a direction for the consultant that doesn't really allow them to, you know, to consider uh, what they may consider. Where we're moving them to the, we're moving them to, you know, guidelines um, that are probably pretty strict.
So Sean, I think what Rich is recommending is let Tim and Josh have another pass at it and bring it back to us. Is that right, Rich?
Yeah, just because I feel like it'd be tough to like, it sounds like there's going to be a lot of spots that this would need changes. And I, and I agree, I agree with what you're saying, Sean. Um, I'm just.
And then Rich and I, and I agree with your point. I, I think we give, I think we give Josh and, and Tim a chance to, you know, uh, take a revisit the wording.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and, oh, sorry, Rich.
No, yeah, I was just, I'll throw one more sentence in there. It, it maybe, maybe the, the angle is looking for, you know, for somebody to give us some options, you know, or I don't, whatever you guys, you guys know how to write this stuff.
Yeah, just on, on the timeline, the timeline is, is your timeline. Um, you know, obviously we want to get this done within the contract of the grant. But um, there's, there's no, we, we don't need to make any decisions tonight. We've actually probably gotten a little bit more done than I was even anticipating discussion and direction. So this is all good. Um, and this is all stuff that, that we can work with. One thing that I'll say is, you know, the, the, the sort of the fundamental reason why we included this language about the Barrett Report is, as I said, it's, it's what we've got and it's a planning process that, you know, people participate in. We've got to, we've got to give a consultant something to hang their hat on. Um, or else no one's going to know. We got to let them know what we're looking for. Um, and so we'll, we'll, I, I'm confident we can figure out something that we can bring back to you that is um, a little more consistent with what you're looking for. But there's going to be some amount of detail that a consultant can say, oh, okay, these people are looking to do something more than what they've got. Um, you know, because otherwise it's, if it's so mushy, you're going to wind up getting, you know, what you've already got. Um, so we'll, we'll figure out a way, I, I, and Sean, I think I hear you loud and clear um, on, on what you're looking for. And it sounds like, you know, other folks agree with that. So um, we will, we will put a, a, a new draft together with that in mind. Um, with some of the, some of the proposed edits that um, that, that Meredith proposed. And um, we'll get that back to you for the, the next time you all want to put this on the agenda.
Tim, if I could make one last point, just to kind of reiterate what, what uh, my thoughts were. That first paragraph reads, you know, two options for regulations promoting, oh, I lost it. There you go. Uh, but anyhow, it, it closes with using the vision statement in that document as a guide. Now, I know we could, we could play with words, a, a guide, a, a reference. Uh, um, I, I don't know, but that's anyhow, I'm not going to talk in the long run. I think I've made the point that I wanted to make. And, and, and I think you understand um, the point I was trying to make. So thank you.
That's great. That's great.
All right, folks, I'm just, Meredith, sorry, I'm going to sign off the phone and join, and rejoin by my computer in a couple of minutes.
All right. That's great, Cheryl. Thank you. And if we're, if the board is through, I think we're, we're ready to send, you know, send it back. You know, I think there's a lot of really good stuff here, but I think there's, we need, there's certain things that we need to work on a little bit. Um, but I know John Cohane or, oh yeah, Rich, sorry.
No, I was just going to say, I remember John, uh, Mr. Cohane wanted to.
Yes. Yes, and he has his hand up. So uh, welcome. And if you could introduce yourself and your address, please.
Sorry, I wasn't able to unmute myself. Uh, John Cohane, um, seventy-three Android Street, Milton. And I'm glad I waited because you have alleviated most of my fears. My fear was that we were going to, to rush through this. Um, and I can obviously see, right? See now that we're obviously not going to do that. And also too, I wanted to make sure, you know, I've heard public outreach mentioned as part of this and I wanted to make sure we all realize that people are interested. Just because we're not hearing from them doesn't mean they're not interested. I've done my best I could during the COVID to keep in touch with my neighbors. We raised money for legal fees, which most donated. I went door to door with flyers. The response was overwhelming. And from that, I, I got to understand that they're, they're all concerned about development in East Milton. And heightened density are the biggest, their biggest issues. And I was also going to say, we went through the trouble, thank you, Tim and Josh, I would add, to get this funding. Let's take the time and welcome new ideas, especially from those of us most impacted. And I think tonight I, I'm, my fears are alleviated because I did hear those new ideas. I know we're not going to rush through this and I, I am looking forward to this process with you all. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Thank you very much. And I don't, does anyone, I don't see anyone else from the public. Um, but if there is anyone else who would like to speak to this before we move on to the next agenda item, please feel free to raise your hand. I am not seeing any hands. So I think, I think we're all in agreement. Um, we will let Josh and Tim do a little work on this and, and see what we can, where we can go next with this. So. That's good. All right. Then we will move on to our next um, agenda item, which, excuse me, my agenda's. The place here, I believe it's the discussion of the 40B, um, which is under new business. Um, and Tim, I don't know if you would like to um, speak on this first and then um, I was reviewing the, the materials and I, I don't know that we need to spend a lengthy discussion on this, but if there's some specific comments, I would love to hear from people. And Tim?
Yeah, so um, I, I, I did my best to include the most up-to-date materials that would give the board um, a good flavor of where we are with these three projects. Um, this is nine thirty-six Brushell Road, sixteen Amor Road, and seven twenty-eight Randolph Ave. Um, they've, they've both, all three have been in public hearings for the past, I don't even know how many months, many months, at least six. Um, they're starting to wind down. Um, and we're, we're starting to get to the point where um, the board is interested in, in comments from the towns. The, the way that I have, um, and, and the, the planning board has, has commented on all of these through the um, project eligibility letter process at, at Mass Housing. So the board is on record with certain uh, kind of high-level comments about the projects. The way that I think managing these projects is, I, I don't want you all to be trying to hit a moving target. Um, these projects, the way that the process at the Board of Appeals is designed is, is meant to be iterative. Um, and you know, a lot of the changes happen as a result of physical site planning. Um, you know, through the advice of the board's peer reviewers. Um, where, where I think the planning board's advice, I think, comes in most handy is through that the end of the process in a sort of, again, a higher level fashion of proposing conditions on an approval document. Um, I think the board's been quite successful in getting its proposed conditions into these approvals. Um, and it's an opportunity for the board to kind of see the, the, the project as it's, you know, as it's likely to be approved. Um, you know, again, based on those, um, those changes to the physical site plan, based on those changes that come from the, the review and advice of the um, Fire Chief, W Director, the Town Engineer, the Health Department, um, and then the Design and Engineering Peer Reviewers. So we're, we're getting close to that stage for all three of these projects. I think nine thirty-six Brushell Road is kind of just along. Um, and so you've got what are relatively final peer review reports that I think um, kind of track the history of comments that those two reviewers had over the course of the review, um, as well as the most updated kind of plans for that project. Um, we just had a hearing last night. Um, we're, we're really kind of at the stage in that project where um, the applicant, um, the board and um, the attorneys representing a group of butters are all kind of proposing draft conditions um, in, that would go into a draft decision. And so I think it's a good time for the planning board to weigh on on this one. That project, that project is not meeting again in the public hearing until um, until September. So it's actually, you know, pretty good timing in terms of the board maybe having a little bit of a discussion tonight, putting some ideas together and then kind of discussing at a future meeting to put that on paper. Seven twenty-eight and sixteen Amor are slightly less further along, but I think again, still makes sense to start thinking about those projects in terms of, you know, okay, here is, you know, they're, they're at a state where, and I can't, you know, I can't, I'm not in the prediction business. I'm not going to speculate as to what the board is going to do. Um, but you know, based on, on my experience with the other projects that have been approved, um, you know, we're, we're at a stage where the board is ready to start talking about, um, you know, a decision. you know, we're, we're at a stage where the board is ready to start talking about, um, you know, a decision on those projects. And the question becomes, what are those, what are those decisions gonna be conditioned upon? And um, so I think you've got the most up-to-date information that I've got. There were new documents that were submitted for, for the Amor Road project. A, that I sent along, and, and I, I think what I'll, what I'll do now is, I've been posting these publicly on, on the Board of Appeals website, I've been trying to sort of document them in a way that allows people to keep track of when submissions come in. But um, you know, I'll start feeding the, the planning board, um, any, any fresh documents that come in from here on out, because you know, what we're gonna start to be getting is, you know, what the applicant considers to be the final product, and then that's something that the Board of Appeals you know, deciding upon. So, um, if you've got specific questions about a particular project, and then what the discussion's been, happy to answer them. But, um, you know, just on all three, I think the Board of Appeals has been kind of in a stance of, you know, let's, let's do what we can to, to mitigate the physical impacts of these projects. I, I, I think, and pay particular attention to, um, the sort of life safety and traffic safety issues. You know, uh, different comments from, from the fire chief, from professionals in town.
Tim, uh, can I ask a question? It's, it's probably gonna be specific, but also general, and I think you're gonna help me understand this process a little bit better. I'll use uh, Amor Road as a specific example, the, the peer review comments were pretty, were pretty rough in terms of, you know, no open space, no, no area for children to play, encroachment on, you know, adjacent uh, residential property, retaining wall use and, and grade that just really made the site problematic and difficult. What happens with those comments? I mean, huh, does, you know, there were suggestions made to change some of the structures from, I think, um, it might have been from four units to two families, right? I'm probably not being specific enough, but wha, how, how do those peer review comments become useful to improve the project?
Yeah, so Amor Road is, is, is an interesting case, but just the, the, the way that project has gone, um, a lot of the work has been, I don't wanna use the term offline, but there hasn't been a lot of submissions. So, so what you've got is actually the first round of peer review comments, and then kind of a very kind of general kind of, you know, response to those from the development team. In other projects, there's more kind of written documentation from the peer reviewers, it just isn't really how, how it's panned out in this one. Those materials that I said that just came in today, um, are kind of concrete improvements, um, based on, based on those peer review comments. One of the documents is a sort of a blow-by-blow response, uh, to the engineering and traffic peer review, so you'll be able to see, you know, this is the comment we got from Tetra Tech, this is how we responded. You'll see in, in those, in those site plans that, you know, one thing that they did was, you know, rather than four single-family houses on Amor Road, they have now have two duplexes, and they've shifted the driveway to the middle of the project, which uh, opens up an area for open space for that project, and also alleviates some of the problems that, um, that emerged relative to emergency access. One of the big problems with that project is the secondary emergency access we're going out onto Brushhill Road, which was just not something that anyone was interested in. And so now, um, that site plan has a configuration that allows the fire apparatus to get in and out, and not have to exit onto, onto Brushhill Road, and, and in fact, no one exits onto Brushhill Road, which is something that we wanted to, um, avoid at the very beginning. So, you know, the, the, the way it works is, you know, the peer reviewers will, will make their comments, they'll testify to those comments, and then it's just sort of, the developer sharpens their pencils and gets back to work. You know, trying to address as many of those comments as possible. You know, those are kind of the, the experts at these, these more kind of technical matters, um, for the Board of Appeals, so they put a lot of weight behind their opinions. So, um, you know, that's kind of, sometimes there's a little more iteration than you've seen with the Amor Road project. That one, it's been basically the first step, and then a lot of back and forth at the hearings, and, and now we've got another kind of marker planted with, um, you know, relatively significant, and, um, is an improvement to the site plan. So you'll see those, I'll send those first in the morning tomorrow, um, to you all, so you have a chance to take a look at those.
Okay, thank you.
Would you like us to go through project by project, um, and comment tonight? Or would you like for us to email you, like Brushhill Road, you know, a treatment, you know, protection plan, a construction, protection plan, you know, things like that that, um, are really important.
I mean, I, I think, I think, I think to the extent that you as a board would feel it helpful to kind of talk together about what your thoughts and priorities are for that project in particular, you know, to take the time to do it tonight, I think that's fine. But, you know, ultimately, you know, what, what I think the Board of Appeals is looking for is, you know, twofold, if, if someone from the planning board is able to come and testify at, at a future hearing, that's great. We always like to see written comments as well, so, you know, a, a, a letter that kind of test, attests to, you know, what the planning board's proposed conditions or, or other, and look, I'm, I'm saying that I would advise you to propose some conditions, you all take whatever comments you want. You know, but, but I would say is, we're, we're kind of late in the game for, you know, I think that, you know, this pipe should go over here instead of over here, um, but we're not late in the game for a lot of the kind of broader things that the planning board prioritizes.
Great Cheryl, please, go ahead.
Tim, um, in looking through the plan set, that, I think a June date, the, you know, having the building be sort of shifted towards Curry College and away from the street and away from the neighbor on the other side is definitely a positive move, but, and I think we could say that, but architecturally, like they have some examples of what they call maybe precedent images or inspiration images, and yet their drawings don't contain that level of architectural character. So is there any way to implore, for us to kind of implore, use some more of what you said is your precedent in the actual design?
I think that's fair enough, um, you know, I, 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 I think that, um, yeah, i- if, if, if the board, if the board, if the board feels strongly about it, you should make the comment. And I think, you know, especially when it comes to, you know, these projects are, are, are kind of schematic designs, especially when it comes to, to the architecture. You know, so, so there is space, I think, for, to make suggestions or even proposed conditions on, you know, materials, forms. You know, some of those things may be, may be tough to get into a decision, but I think again, um, you know, you'd rather, you'd rather have it on the record than, than not. You know, so I think it's definitely fair game, um, and, and we can kind of figure out, you know, how to, how to get that into a decision. And, and that'll be kind of up to the board and, and the applicant together to work that out.
And especially in that setting where the architecture is really, there's some just absolutely beautiful historic homes, I, I, I think that it, it's worth noting that, yeah, that's very important.
Cheryl, I think you're still muted.
I would say is that the roof pitch is a shallow roof pitch. And, you know, one way to, they don't have to necessarily change their floor plans in order to make that roof pitch be a little bit steeper. I mean, they're going, they don't need to follow the height requirements anyway, and so, you know, getting, i- if, if they have to go a few feet higher and get a steeper slope, it'll be more in character with the surroundings than not. And then, uh, the other thing, you know, I would say is just, um, as, as Meredith has said before too, it's just, uh, things that give relief to the facade, that create shadow. And, you know, if, if they look at the example of what they've provided, you know, those things do that. And then, um, you know, how the windows are set within the facade. You know, Meredith, it's interesting, we had that conversation on the design guidelines, you know, about the windows.
Yeah.
And, uh, I was at a recent meeting, uh, with design staff in Boston, the Boston Planning and Development Agency, and they are, Tim, I don't know if they were doing this when you were there, but they are seeking to have window details submitted as part of plan sets, and they don't wanna see flush, windows flush with the facade, so looking for that shadow line. So they're pushing design teams to come up with solutions for that. So, in any case, just thought you'd be interested in that, Meredith.
Thank you, that's okay.
They were not doing that when I was there, and we got, we got our heads bashed in every single time we went out, we had an architect in the audience. So I'm glad you heard that.
I, I mentioned the, the challenges, but you know, sometimes when architects are, are mandated to do things, you know, they and their clients, you know, have to put their heads together and figure it out, so, um, but anyway, my, my point about it really is, if you look at some of the examples, it's where the window is in relation to the face of the facade, window trim, how it's set off. You know, some of that is what makes their examples look reasonably nice, but then I look at their renderings and I think, ah, that's not, I don't see the relationship between the samples, the examples and what they're showing us. Anyway, that, that would be my, my, uh, push a bit more on the architecture. Because if I, if I look at the renderings, they look flat and shallow roof slope, and you know, they look like unattractive apartment building, sorry, but, and I don't think they have to.
And I would, I have a question, when I was looking at the size of the plant materials, can we request them to be bigger size? So a three gallon hydranger really isn't very big. You know, or even in eight to ten foot Amalacars, not very big. So is, is there usually a, a height requirement in relation to the height of the building that's proposed? Cause on Amor Road, it said that the whole site will be pretty much cleared.
I, I don't think, I don't think anyone has put that much thought into that, so I think that would be a really, um, well-put and probably useful, um, set of comments, so, um, yes. And I, and, 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 and I think, you know, so, so a- as I'm kind of thinking this, um, you know, I, I think part of me, part of me wants you all to like throw as many comments at me, these projects as you can, and then we can maybe take the next meeting to try to put together some, some letters, because I think, um, you know, the sooner we get this off, the better, um, and, and the more influence it'll have. But also, I think it'll help me kind of start to categorize, you know, the types of comments that maybe are more suited towards a condition, or maybe are more suited towards, let's see if we can get this change in the plans, you know, before, before, before the end of the process. And I think there's the ability to do that for all of these projects. But I, I, I think, you know, being able to create a taxonomy for me would be good for that.
Cheryl, yes, put your hand up.
I'm jumping back and forth on my laptop between the drawings and this meeting, so I'm not seeing sometimes, I don't, I'm muted. The lighting plan, the photometric plan, um, you know, it's a pretty commercial-looking light fixture, you know, we've in like the Hendrys and I think, uh, elsewhere, we've looked for something that's less commercial-looking. So again, um, that's something I think we should comment on, and, and if you're looking for us to throw things out tonight, Tim, that would be one that I'd like to throw out for us to look at. How also, we should look at if there's, um, building-mounted lighting, how much, you know, what the photometrics are. I, I know in, um, the Canton F forty B, I looked at the, the lighting plan pretty carefully and questioned how, how many foot candles do they, the level of lighting that was out there, what kind of controls were on the lighting? If they could be on daylight sensors, occupancy centers and so forth, just so that the neighbor, because the drive is on the Brushhill roadside, the drive is on the side of the residential neighbor, and we don't want that, um, drive to be lit up, you know, unnecessarily. I mean, we obviously want it to be safe, but you don't need it to be lit when it's not in use, so that would be the sort of thing. Oh, I think it was also on the, um, Goddard School that we talked about that quite a bit.
Yes.
Yeah, so that, I have a question about the roadway, so, you know, on the, the Grogan, Grogan project we just approved, which was just a two-home subdivision, you know, they needed, um, a thirty-foot roadway. So it was a thirty-foot road, um, pavement with a twenty-foot, I think, driveway. But then on the Randolph Ave, the seven twenty-eight Randolph Ave, it says it's only, um, the driveway is only twelve feet. But it, at the width, um, at the curb, it's eighteen feet. So how can we have a two-home private subdivision that requires thirty foot, but then with this forty unit, proposed forty unit only needs to be twelve feet? Is there any consistency? Obviously not.
So, so on, on, on something like this, um, you know, be- because they, you know, the nature of forty B is that you, you can, you can waive any local requirement that doesn't make your project work. It, it becomes a matter of, you know, what is, what is the proposal? Does it work, you know, for, for what, you know, the town needs? So what, what, what I'll say is that we have had, um, Chief Madden has, has looked through each of these projects to make sure that, um, his fire apparatuses can, can get in and out, um, you know, as they need, and so the site plan has been changed to, um, to reflect that, um, as well as, um, you know, a, a, a traffic peer review that kind of looks at stopping distances and, and kind of the ability for cars to safely kind of maneuver in and out of the, uh, the project. And so, you know, this site plan reflects a lot of those changes that have already been made. So, you know, whether, you know, the, the, the driveway as it stands now, you know, may not be consistent with subdivision or other kind of driveways that we've produced, but it's, it's what they're proposing. And, um, you know, we've, we've had them kind of make sufficient changes to, um, accommodate all of those, um, safety issues.
Tim, can you, um, restate if you've already said it? It looks to me like Amor Road hasn't changed much in terms of design. What's the peer review comment on that? I didn't get a chance to review that letter.
There's a lot of comments, um, and, and like I said, the, they, they've just submitted new materials today that, um, reflect um, a number of changes that are responsive to the peer review comments. You know, like I said, the, the, the big issues, you know, were, um, access in and out of the site, um, to avoid accessing, uh, Brushhill Road at the intersection with Amor Truman Highway and, and Brushhill. Really trying to get the, the townhouse block as far away from that property line as possible. I mean, we're talking about, you know, inches and feet, but, um, you know, they've been able to do that, you know, and, and correspondingly kind of adjust some of the grading and some of the retaining walls that were required, you know, to do that. And then finally, um, you know, to create some additional open space on-site from water retention and obviously kind of, you know, a, a, amenity for, um, for the residents. And I think, you know, just based on my first look at those plans, they've, they've at least made, made a stab at all of those issues. But those, those just came in and will need to be, um, you know, reviewed by the board and, and by, by, by town officials and by the peer reviewers. But I'll, I'll send all those out in the morning, kind of see for yourself.
Tim, that was really helpful, putting those in our, our, in our files, that, that was made it very much more easily, you know, to access the most recent information, because there's a lot of information that's out there. We wanna make sure what we have is the most current, so thank you, that, that was great to have.
Yeah, and, and it's, it's been, it's been a little tough, because each of the developers has a different kind of style in terms of what they submit. You know, if, if I had to do it again, and I hope to never do it again, we'd do it a little bit differently, but, I think again, from here on out, um, you know, as we get new documents, we'll, I'll get them straight to you, just to see, you know, where, whatever we're at. There's just been a, just a deluge over the course of the last six months of, of material that, um, you know, again, it's the moving target, um, but it's, it's starting to move a little bit slower, and I think now's the time to extend a metaphor.
And Sean and, and Rich, I don't know if you have anything to add. I, I want us to focus on all of these forty Bs. I, I mean, I think they all deserve just our utmost attention. But as Tim said, Brushhill Road is, is the furthest along, so I feel like time is of the essence that we really get our comments in. So if we have more comments tonight, but if not, I think we should all just review them, all the materials, and send comments to Tim, and Tim, I would be happy to. and send comments to Tim. And Tim, I would be happy to attend a ZBA meeting and just speak on behalf of the planning board.
Yeah. And, 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 and what, and what I'll say is, is if you can take, you know, a, a, another kind of close look at those plans and if you've got any comments, what I can do with, with the board's permission is, you know, rather than wait for the next hearing or, or wait for a comprehensive, um, you know, comment letter to be drafted and approved by the board. If I get a comment that says, you know, you should be doing a six gallon hydrangea instead of a three gallon hydrangea, I'll pass that directly along, um, you know, just so it gets into the applicant's hands, you know, as soon as they can in order to be responsive.
Tim, I didn't, I'm sorry.
No, go for it.
I, I didn't see renderings in that latest plan set for Amor Road.
The, the, the one that just went up today?
Yes. And I, I guess my comment about that is just a quick look at the grading plants, you know, retaining walls facing Brushell Road and not understanding what that looks like. You know, the only 3D view we have is really a big aerial. Um, and then some elevations, which I'm not sure how. They don't tell me a lot about what's going on with like retaining walls. But if I, if I look at the, I guess it would be the Amor Road elevation, I see retaining wall on the left. I don't understand exactly how much fills being brought in here. All right. I'll take a, a, a more careful look at some of that, but I guess that would be some of my comment, like why, why no 3D views at eye level?
Yeah. It looks like a lot of materials and a lot of information was missing on Amor Road. There was a lot.
Yeah. I think that's, that's definitely fair enough. And so that one, um, you know, they, they're having hearing next week on that one. So that's, we can get that direct feedback, um, right to the applicant next week on that. Um, so, I don't know when they'll meet after that, um, but, um, I think there's still, that, that one, there's still a little bit more time to sort of get those materials and kind of, um, you know, drill down to some of that stuff.
And then they have so much paving on that one. Is there any opportunity to do porous pavers? Or, you know, something which is not, um, all impervious? I mean, they're, they're, they're making something totally impervious across the site. Has that been part of the discussion at all?
I don't know if that's been specifically been an ask, but, but again, we can, we can definitely put it on their radar.
Tim, um, what, what, what impact can we have on any of these projects?
I think the, the, the way that the, again, the, the way that the Board of Appeals has been approaching these has been to, and, and, and my advice to them has always been, you know, work as, as, as hard as you need and extend these hearings as much as you need to get to a point where, where you can, you can issue an approval that has conditions that you are comfortable with and that to the greatest extent possible, the applicant is comfortable with. Because I think when, when, when you, when you don't take that approach, you, you wind up in an appeal and, and we're, we're, we're not likely to win an appeal. And so what impact can the planning board have? What impact can any kind of, you know, town official or town, you know, uh, board have? It depends on what you're trying to accomplish. If you're trying to prevent the project from happening, um, it's a really tough road to hoe. If you are trying to, you know, propose conditions that are going to mitigate an impact that you feel has so far gone unmitigated. I think that is an area that is, is much more fertile ground, um, for, for the board's influence. Um, I think especially as it relates to, you know, some of the design issues that, that Cheryl has brought up. You know, which again, you know, we've, we've, we've had a design peer reviewer, but, um, you know, when, when, when you're, when you get some of these projects, there are so many battles to pick that sometimes some of those battles, the cracks. And so to hear some of that commentary from the planning board about, you know, uh, about the lighting fixtures or about, um, you know, the size of the plantings. I think those are things that are, that are definitely, um, you know, it seems like small things, but you know, when you're clearing sites, the way that these projects are clearing sites, and when you need as much of that vegetation screening and kind of design interventions, you know, to, to mitigate the size of these projects, it becomes really important. And so I think, you know, do, do it, doing your best to sort of, you know, work from the assumption that like, okay, this is a project that is, you know, has a strong likelihood of, of, of happening. How can we make it the best possible project and the one that impacts the town and the neighbors the least? I think that's where, where you can be most effective. And, and look, if, if, if you don't think these things should exist in the first place, um, I, I think you, you're, you're in, you're in good company. Um, there's a lot of people that think that, um, but also, you know, realistically, we have to engage with, with kind of where we are. And, and 40B is a blunt instrument, um, that is wielded against towns like Milton, um, in order to get affordable housing built. And so operate from that assumption, there's a lot of smaller levers to kind of, to, to pull into influence. So I think, you know, I, I think there's still plenty of opportunity on, on all three of these for the planning board to kind of propose things that make the project better, um, from construction period onward to kind of operations.
All right. So speaking of making things better, I just looked at the site plan and those renderings for Randolph Ave. Do you think anybody can reasonably use those ramps for him if you're in a wheelchair or otherwise? I mean, it's pretty ridiculous. There's two sets of triple switchback ramps. I mean, that's, you know, people just won't use those and they're going to be, and are they going to maintain them and keep the ice and snow off of them? And leaves off of them? I mean, that solution to me is not desirable. So I would definitely comment on that.
Yeah. I mean, they're going to be obligated to. And so, um, you know, that becomes, you know, that, that becomes a question of, you know, the, is the decision, you know, Cheryl, you, you know, as well as I do, the design is self enforcing. And so your, your first choice would be, you know, a design where you don't have to worry about, you know, brushing the leaves off because it's located, designed a certain way. Um, you know, the topography and then the way that the site plan is kind of prevents that. And so, you know, are there operational conditions that need to be placed in that decision? That give, you know, the building commissioner and the town, you know, the additional teeth that, that are needed to make sure that those are passable um, in all seasons for, for everyone needs to use them.
But I would also say, Tim, that I know, I mean, I struggle obviously as an architect designing to meet accessibility requirements. But, uh, this is an engineer's solution that I see on these plans. And I, I'd like to see a design solution that's a little, it's a little bit nicer, you know? Is that just pipe rail and switchback concrete? You know, what's that really looking like? Because, um, it's really visible to the neighbor, you know, at, let me see, the address that is.
736.
Yeah. I mean, they're going to be looking at this, these things, which are, you know, are going to not be attractive the way they're shown here anyway. Proposed sidewalk, accessible ramp with railings and retaining wall. We don't know what they're made out of. We don't know what the railings look like, but if they're going to do it, the least cost, they're going to be pipe rails. And, um, you know, the, the architectural renderings that they're showing for that, let me find those. You know, make it, okay. You know, they don't make it look so bad, but you know, they're not going to be making that out of limestone. So, you know, what are they actually making it out of? And it is shown as pipe rail in the stair there and a retaining wall there. You know, so for example, do they, do the walls have to be so that it, they share a common wall between the ramps going two different directions? Could they have a landscape planter in between those runs, for example? You know, making it something that's thought, more thoughtful, more integrated into the site. I guess it's, you know, give a little design attention rather than engineering attention. Anyway, that, that's my comment on that. And I'm sure Maggie could have other comments related to integrating better in the landscape, but.
I'm, I'm writing all these down, but, um, I think you all should write them down also.
Yeah. No, we should definitely. Because sometimes, design doesn't have to be more expensive. It could be just an alternative to what they currently have designed that, like Cheryl said, the engineer might not have thought about that. He wasn't designing for aesthetics. He was more functional. So that's very good.
I have a question, sorry, about the Randolph Ave. So if the 711 was just approved and this one is right across the street, does that, how, does that make the 728 like different now? Because did the 711 originally have, that you could only exit that, um, site with a right-hand turn? Was that overturned?
I would, I would have to look at where that condition wound up. I think that there was a similar proposal at 728 where they wanted to do something where, um, residents of the new building could only make a right turn.
Yes.
Coming out. And I think what, what they, what, what, whatever one determined was, that was actually an unenforceable solution. It would be because it's a shared driveway. It's not like, it's one thing with 711 as a new project. So if anyone makes a left-hand turn, you know, that it's someone from that project. Because it's a shared driveway, there's a sort of dual condition where, okay, 718 and 736 can take whatever turn they want. Then these other guys can only make a right turn. What are you going to do? Do you ask for people's papers, you know, for, you know, the, the, the police department was not prepared to enforce a condition like that. And, you know, so again, it becomes, you know, how do you, how do you design this thing? So, I mean, the, the issue remains that Randolph Ave is, is not good. And so, you know, this project needs to do everything that it can to keep its people safe coming in and out of the project. But quite frankly, the Commonwealth has a lot of work to do as well on, on, on Route 28. And, and, and we hope that, that they do. So it's, you know, this is an especially tough location for the project and, and, you know, I, I, I think that's probably on that project. That's the main issue that the board has been dealing with, not just the, the legal issues around, you know, changes to the, the shared driveway and the easements inherent in those, but also kind of the safety issue of coming in and out. So that's still, that's still quite an active issue.
You're referring to 728 on that, on that topic? Yeah.
Yeah.
So just because there's one 40B across the street, which I think is 90 units, right? So, so they, they're okay in a, you know, the housing, Department of Housing is okay in approving another 40B across the street of 40 units? They don't think that that is too much density in one area?
The housing folks at the state certainly don't think it's too much density in one area. Um, so, so yes. And, and, and I think, um, you know, ultimately, you know, it's, it's the Board of Appeals that issues the permit. And so, you know, they've got to sort of look at it, um, you know, based on the application that they've got, but also, you know, in the context. And I, I, I think everyone's been kind of, you know, 711 has been in the back of everyone's mind. I, I, you know, even to the extent that I think the traffic study takes that into account as kind of background. You know, presuming that those impacts are already there. So, but it is, you know, it, it does add a level of, of complexity, um, you know, to think about having those two things across the street from each other. But, you know, we, um, we can't, we can't pick the 40B sites. Those get picked for us. And so we have to deal with it.
You know, generally, um, Rich, I, I find most of these buildings to be lacking in architectural thought and you know, complementary elements that can make structures look nice, you know? Uh, I mean, it's just, they're, they're simple, they're cheap, they're driven by, by cost more than they are driven by anything else. And, uh, what do you do with that? You know? I agree.
I don't disagree. One thing I want to add, Tim, is that I didn't see a photometric plan for the 728 Randolph Ave. Unless it might be in one of those folders, but it's not in what's called the revised plan set that seems to have other things. And, um, you know, those ramps are probably going to have to be lit. That's the, you know, walk from the sidewalk. Um, I'd hate to see a lot of lighting get spilled into that, those neighbors' homes.
I just don't think this is an accurate depiction of how much space is really there at 728. Like tight, what's a tight driveway? This is not accurate.
I mean, I think they're expanding the driveway. So it's, um.
I thought that they were, um, trying to come to an agreement with the neighbor on the left. Cannot remove all that green space.
I, I, this is something, so this is, and this is a question that's been kind of raised at other, um, in, in other 40Bs where you've got a kind of a shared driveway condition. You know, what, what is, what, what is the extent of, of every owner's kind of rights in that, in that driveway? And rights to improve it and kind of expand upon it. So again, that's, that's an issue that the board's wrestling with, um, and is, is really one of the fundamental issues that's going to be a make or break in their decision-making processes, you know, how comfortable they are with, with being proposed versus what their ability to, to do it is.
So are they okay with that? I mean, I heard you speak at the meeting about, um, using the access road as the dump. And that's just a different process because you have to go to town meeting to get permission. Would the developer, the developer be okay pursuing that? Has he expressed interest in pursuing that at all?
They have. Um, you know, I, I, I think that the way, the, the way that it's been conveyed to me is that, um, you know, they're, they're in a, they're in a comprehensive permit review. They're confident that they have a site plan that can work. And so they're going to continue to pursue that and they want their comprehensive permit in hand. But I think everyone agrees, um, and, and, you know, we've talked about it, you know, publicly, that, um, it's, it's a superior site plan. If you've got access to the access road, um, you're dumping your traffic into a signalized intersection. It frees up that driveway for, you know, emergency only access. It changes the site plan in positive ways. So I, I think the recognition that it will be a better project. You know, we're going to, we're going to look into, you know, pursuing that at town meeting. Working with that developer and seeing if town meeting is, is ready to grant, um, you know, uh, easement rights to that project, to the access road. But, you know, there's, I, I don't have, you know, 100% lead pipe lock guarantee that, you know, they'll do it if we give it to them. But I think, you know, every indication that I have right now, um, including my, my preliminary discussion with the developer, you know, lead me to believe that it's something that they would be interested in. And so I think, you know, it's something that we kind of, I, I, I think we're obligated to pursue it because it, it makes the project better, um, and safer and, you know, it mitigates a lot of impacts. But again, that's something, that's something that, you know, is not on the table as it relates to this approval right now. So we're kind of dealing with the application that we've got.
I would just, um, on the landscape plan, that small playground and dog park are jammed in and tiny and the landscaping is minimal. And Maggie made the point of preserving green space, but they're doing it to the detriment of those ramps and to the detriment of the neighbor, uh, on the other side, you know? So, um, where the neighbor, I'm sorry, I don't know. Let me look back at the numbers. I guess it would be the landscape plan doesn't have the numbers. All right. So I'm just going to use Plan North and Plan. So Plan North would, yeah, would be towards the top. So the neighbor towards the top is up sloped from the neighbor to the south or the bottom of the drive. And so the, the visual impact is far more greater for the neighbor to the south or the bottom than the one to the north. So, um, you know, giving, what I said was, was put the little landscape between the runs on the ramp would, would push it for development a little bit further to the north. But I don't see how it would harm the neighbor to the north and it would help the neighbor to the south.
Nothing's going to help the neighbor to the south.
No, but you know, if you can have something that's not the solid block of ramp of concrete, Maggie, do you think there would be any benefit? Like even if you could get a landscape between the curb and the beginning of the ramp on the one clo- Like even if you could get a landscape between the curb and the beginning of the ramp on the one closest to the street. There's not even room for a landscape there. I mean, they show grass on the rendering, but the site plan, there's, there's no room for grass.
And it's the landscaper who lives, you know, on the left side there. So he takes care of all that green space now. So he would do anything to help preserve and take care of the green space. But I really, it's the house on the right. There's not even a, any room to plant a tree between the driveway and the house. It is really tight.
And they're gonna look out, whatever windows they have looking that way, they're gonna be looking out of. The big chunk of concrete ramp and railing. That's why I thought, even if you could get two or three feet where you can get some kind of planting there. So that they're looking out at whatever that makes sense for a planting instead of curb and concrete right on top of the curb. And I don't know, maybe they're trying to save some trees in a particular location, but it doesn't, it's not clear to me that that's what they're trying to do. This is the, and you would think that they would have an interest in having this look better because this is the entrance to the development.
You would think. Seems logical. Just, yeah.
So, so I, I've taken, I've taken a bunch of notes, but it would, would, would really be great if, if you've made any comments here to, to follow up the email and I'll. Put those into a little bit more of a tighter package to send to the board. Um, just again, so they have something in their hands, some preliminary planning board. Um, with the anticipation that we'll have, you know, maybe a final written letter and, and then some testimony. At future hearings from, uh, from the chair. Um, so that would be, that would be really helpful. And I think that, that would be the most impactful thing.
Go ahead, Rich.
Oh, no, it's just, and you might have said this because I'm, I'm trying to read and look at the same time as everyone's talking, but. And, and I might just be bringing it up again. So just, you can tell me you already discussed it. But the way, the way it looks, right? I mean, I get that it's a driveway to the project. But it, but there's gonna be a lot of traffic. And so it, it almost looks like this person. Is now abutting a main road, almost. You know what I mean? Can you do that to somebody? Like, that's not really a driveway anymore. That's, that's a high, that's a, a very used street. You know, with that many people living there.
And a three, it was only a three, it's supposed to be an easement for three homes, three single-family homes.
Yeah, it's very different when you have an easement or a couple of homes that you're sharing a driveway. To now you're ten, or I don't know, what is that, five feet? I can't tell by the picture. You're a couple of feet away from like. About lots of cars coming barreling down there constantly every day. That just seems like such a safety issue.
It's so disingenuous to have a picture of somebody in the crosswalk packing their phone, walking up Randolph Ave. Where are they walking to?
Oh my God, I've never, I mean, I lived on Randolph Ave and I was terrified with my kids walking on Randolph Ave. And if I was that homeowner, you know, if I had little kids, you, you know, you're afraid because people. That's a long road, so people can get up to some good speed coming feet from their front door.
I think, uh, I think they're walking a thin nursery. That's what I thought.
They got some plants where they're.
Yeah. That, that driveway, Maggie, when I see that plan, I think you're right. It, it looks like on the existing conditions plan that it's, it's 24 feet wide and the. You know, the site plan indicates it's only gonna be 24 feet wide, but. Anyhow, I think you're right. Uh, Rich, for, for us. In order to try to keep pace with what, you know, we're trying to keep pace with. You want comments? Could you give us an order of when you'd like comments? I think you were saying 936 is, 936 is the priority right now.
Yeah, I mean, I, 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 I think if, you know. If you can get 936 comments in within a week and then maybe the other projects within two weeks, I think we'd be. Probably in, in, in decent shape.
This is your day job and your night job. It's only our night job, you know, so that, that helps.
Yeah, no, and, 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 you know, like I said, I've, I've taken some notes. Um, and, and I can. You know, I can, I can kind of preview some of this stuff with the applicant, just to let them know it's coming. And if they wanted to start kind of thinking about it, so, you know. My, my priority is sort of giving, you know, the, the most opportunity to actually see a change in the site plan. You know, we'll wanna, you know, your, your comments are for the record. Um, and we want to make sure that they're on the record. Because it's important for projects like this. But also I can kind of preview some of this stuff to the applicant and let them know, hey, this is coming. Be prepared. You might wanna, you know, think about stuff like this.
What would you do with a comment that I give to you that says your architect has ugly designs and I give you Cheryl's good contact?
There's no accounting for taste, I think, is what the applicant's response would be.
Okay.
Yeah, but you know, I, I feel like, so is there anything you can do about protecting that person's property?
I think, I mean, you know, Rich, like I said, um, the, the, the issue of kind of the, the, the burdening of that easement. Is really central in the, the Board of Appeals conversation right now. You know, this was, this was an issue in another 40B project. I think, um, you know, there are. You know, there, there are competing kind of views, you know, legally, whether it's, you know, jurisdictional for the Board of Appeals or not, but I think. The, the, the fact remains that you're sort of, you're, you're looking at a physical site plan that's gonna put impacts on, in a butter. Um, and so how do you, how do you use your permitting authority to the extent that you have it, um, to, to mitigate those impacts? So. I think, um, you know, again, there's a legal argument, there's a design argument, there's an engineering argument. Um, they're wrestling with all of those right now.
Would he be interested in doing single-family housing? Has he been approached?
I don't. No, he hasn't been approached. No one, no one's approached. I, I mean, to my knowledge, no one's approached him. So I, I, my instinct would be no, but also, um, it hasn't been something that the board has brought up.
Can I just add something here? This property owner, um, approached the planning board and the master plan implementation committee. I've forgotten how many years ago with the plan that he wanted to do townhouses on this site. And. I think he was looking for one of the bodies to say, yes, we think it's a good idea. We'll draft some zoning that will allow it. Because there is no zoning that would have allowed it. And neither. And he, he was working with, um, the late Paul Sullivan at the time. And, um. And, and, and maybe Paul's, um. Death contributed to the fact that things didn't move forward in a zoning way on a townhouse, but I'm not quite sure. But, um, it just so bad out there because, you know, it's something for us to think about. If we get somebody else that comes before us with the property and says they'd like for us to think about working with them. It, it's just food for thought, you know? Would townhouses have been better than this 40-unit building? I think probably. So, you know. I don't think that we're going backwards to that, but I, I just. It's a sort of something that's been in the back of my mind, you know, since I've been around long enough to remember that.
Tim, so if we wanted to approach the, the applicant and say, you know, given the construction costs that are increasing. Interest rates, you know, perhaps. He may be rethinking his own costs and timeline and wanting to move forward with a project sooner than. Than what the 40B process might entail. Maybe it's worth having a conversation. And what would be the, the proper?
If, if the board, I can reach out to, to the applicant's attorney and just see if that's a conversation that they would be willing to entertain. You know, without having a specific pitch, I think it's just sort of, you know. Are, are you open to an alternative, you know, plan for this project? Um, my instinct is no, but, you know. What's the worst that can happen? They say no. Um, so, you know, we can, we can, I, I, I can definitely kind of broach that issue. Um, and we're back to the board on that.
Great. One thing, just to think around in terms of how long these projects might take, whether they'll be lengthy or not, is whether. We think that there will be an appeal and whether we think that the town will defend any lawsuits. And I don't know. Given the result of, um, 711 Randolph Ave and how much was spent in legal fees challenging that. How many of these, the, the Board of Appeal, I mean, the, uh, the select board's going to agree to sort of follow through to that level of. Legal challenge. So I don't, I guess my sense is, Meredith, is that they're not gonna all take seven years anymore.
No, I, I.
But, but the neighbor could, would have probably appealed.
It should become standing, is my understanding, is whether they, you know, like certain. Things neighbors might have some standing on, um, but they may not on others. That's, that's my understanding from. All of these 40Bs that I've been, you know, hearing about. And, and the one near me in particular.
I can't tell. Is there, is there a house beyond that green? Is it green? Green house?
Yeah, it's, they're taking it down. They're taking, so it was originally three houses. The developer bought one and. Took it down and it'll be built behind it.
So they're not, they didn't buy this house?
No, not yet.
We, we actually have a, um, a resident who has their hand up who would like to speak. If we can bring in, um, Stephanie. Oh, Stephanie Burnett? You're in, you're now. You joined the meeting?
Yes, hello. Can you hear me?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, hi, this is Tepan Burnett of 90th, uh, 924 Brush Hill Road. So. I'm a director viewer to the 93, uh, um, project. And I'm just looking at the time and want to make sure that, that, uh, the 93 project is, is, uh. Given the, uh, same level of discussion since it is the, uh, the one that is the closest to completion at this time. At least from my understanding. Um, and I will leave it at that if, um, if, if you can comment on that. Just looking at the fact that it's, um, 943 and then, um, 93, the, the. The, the meeting is scheduled to end at 10, as far as I know. And then we just started talking about 9, 936, uh. Project. I, I will, um, let you comment on that.
Thank you. I, I'm not sure if you've just joined the meeting. Um, we have given, um, a number of comments on that project. We will be continuing to comment on that, um, and submit this week our, our written comments. Were there other comments that people would like to add to that, though? Please feel free.
Meredith, I'd like to add one. I think I commented this some time ago, is the location of the transformer, which is like right at the street. And it doesn't show any landscape buffer or anything. And I, I know that, uh. Rich probably knows this better than I, but, you know, the utility company likes these close to the road. They like to get access to them. They don't like them hidden. But, um, you know, it's a pretty prominent location. So, you know, if we could ask them, you know, to look at that. The, um, other thing I would say is that, um. So, to, um, the speaker who just spoke, one of the, um, things that I commented on earlier is that. I do think by having pushed the building, uh, back and further away. From your property at 924 Brush Hill Road and towards the Curry College is better. Um, and allows for some landscape buffer. I do have, I did mention wanting to make sure we understood the lighting. Site lighting so that, that wouldn't be a negative impact, um, to you and other neighbors. So we're going to look at that lighting and ask for more information and ask for them to, um, consider different light fixtures. For that drive.
The retaining wall. Cheryl, you might want to comment because that, that was greatly reduced, but it still is, um. Maybe something that that could be buffered too, architecturally.
Yeah, so I'll take a look a, a little bit further at the retaining wall and the landscape plan related to it. Um, I did comment on the architecture and the slope of the roofs and, um, the. Lack of level of detail. And the comment would be for them to actually, um. Use some of the same kind of design strategies of the examples that they've provided. Which are, which do provide better, uh, relief in the facade, better trim, so a nicer proportion of the. Slope of the roof to the width of the building, et cetera. Um, Maggie commented on the size of the plant materials and she was going to give. I think further comment on that. One thing I would note too. Just sorry, um, Meredith, one last thing. I'm just looking at the, the landscape plan. I mean, the, this one is showing, um, an enclosure. Around, uh, trash, um, which would be fairly close to this above its property. You know, it, I, I would ask them to consider putting that inside the garage. So that, um. You know, it's showing being gated and enclosed. But, you know, in the, in, in a lot of the projects that, you know, my office is involved in, we try and get those inside. So that there's not an impact to the neighbors.
Yep, that's great. And also I think the, the, um, the lighting, the commercial lighting. Switching that out for some lighting that's more residential and more to the standards of what we would see throughout Milton.
No, you might look at, we might look at something like some cobblestones at the end of the drive, you know, so that, that is transitioned. So it's not all just asphalt. I mean, some of the detail will make a big difference. Parking, the parking in front is called out to be unit pavers on the landscape plan. So maybe those same unit pavers can be used at the end of the driveway. And now that I'm looking at that plan a little bit further, the snow storage seems totally inadequate, right next, it's like a three-foot strip next to the parking. So how realistic is that?
And I, I actually think that site is so tight, there should be more of a, a snow removal. I, I think they should be required to do snow removal on it because I don't think there is storage space.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. Another thing is I see the gas meters there on the facade facing, um. The, um, the neighbor, I'm sorry, I don't have the address, you know, uh, previous speaker. I mean, maybe those can move down the facade further, a little further away. Little less visible. Again, that becomes a little bit of a battle with the utility company, but if we can get them a little less prominent, better, the better it is. Or even move them to the, the other side of the building, to the Curry Collie side of the building.
These are all excellent.
These are the things that don't, they, they look like very small things on plans, but when, when things are built, they become so glaring out there.
Very good. Anyone have anything?
Like, like I said, I'll, I'll kind of, I'll, you know, back chat all these comments to the applicants. Um, and then if, if I can get them kind of in, in more kind of formal form, you know, within a week, we'll get that to the Board of Appeals. And then on the other two projects, you know, if you can get some, some notes into me in two weeks, I'll draft up a letter. Um, and then again, um, you know, we can, we can kind of preview, um, some, some direct, um, testimony, um, at a future hearing. For each of those.
Is there any, I, I'm cycling through them and I'm not seeing what I'm looking for, but. Is there a drawing that shows like a zoomed-in area? Of that, um, the entrance where that, the ramp is, the house is, that whole section? See, I'm trying to zoom in on the maps. It's just, it's not as easy to see. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Maybe you guys moved on and I didn't. Sorry.
Yeah, we're, we were just trying to prioritize Brush Hill Road since that's.
All right, can I just ask that anyway? So I don't have to go back to what happened. Is there any way for us to get a drawing of a zoomed in on that one?
So you want like gra- a greater detail of the kind of the ramp area relative to this?
And I'm sorry, Meredith, I, I must have been like engrossed in looking at this. I was, I was not paying attention. Yeah, I just, you know, the only zoomed-in area is the rendering. And I'm sorry. Yeah, I just, you know, the only zoomed-in area is the rendering, and I'm sorry, but those renderings don't make any sense. They're they're not to scale. They don't make sense. They don't. They're not real. Like, if you actually look at a real map like online, and then you look at that map, the distances don't make any sense. And so I just can't tell on these drawings. I want to zoom in. I want to see it.
That's what Maggie was saying, I think.
Okay, good. Sorry, it's tough to look at these things.
I know, I know, it is.
Sorry, go ahead.
So anything else to add on Brush Hill Road, or we can definitely please get comments in on on all of these, but but sooner this the soonest as possible on Brush Hill Road. So that's coming in first. Okay.
Meredith, I'm sorry. Can I make one more comment about Brush Hill Road?
Yes, yes.
I think by looking at the landscape plan again, when cars are coming in and out of the garage, you know, they'll potentially have headlights, you know, going towards the neighboring property. And I think, you know, you know, whether there should be some fencing in addition to landscaping or very dense landscaping that it's, you know, has coverage during the winter so that you're not getting headlights into the neighboring property.
Would make a difference, a big difference.
Yeah.
And all of these items make for a better project. I mean, it really does. Hopefully would enhance their development, and they would be incentivized to do that.
Yeah, I think it's just being thoughtful about some of the details.
Okay. Great. These were all very good. And I'm sure we're all going to think of many more, too, so we'll get them to Tim. Okay, so with that, I think can we move to the next agenda item? Is everyone ready or?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So I Arthur and I had spoken about how nice it would be to have a joint planning board and select board meeting. You know, I think a lot of the work that we do and, you know, the select board, the planning that they're they are thinking of in the town, there's a lot of overlap, you know, between our our boards sometimes and and the direction that we're moving. And so we thought it might be nice to have a joint meeting with both of the boards that would be separate from our just our regular meeting, just an additional meeting, you know, not a lengthy meeting, but to to talk in general terms of what our goals are and what we're trying to do. You know, especially with this, the new overlay zoning in East Milton and and how good that can be for our town and how exciting and and what a good opportunity that this can be in working with the community in in doing that and getting their feedback. So we we talked about maybe the first week in August. And I did not get to watch this the select boards meeting last night. I think they were going to maybe throw out some dates or talk about, you know, how we could work about how we could make this work together because with both boards, you know, everyone is so busy. So I was thinking even just sending out, you know, maybe or Tim, you know, correspond with Anne Marie and see if there's dates that work for them and that work for us, or we send out a poll of some sort to check people's schedules.
Yeah, I mean, are we thinking August?
Or? We were, and part of that, part of the the reason for doing that. One of the things that we had wanted to put on the agenda, we there's not an agenda set yet, but one of the things that we were talking about is for the committees that we have joint that we appoint jointly, where like for the Master Plan Implementation Committee, that's both a planning board and a select board nominations. And so how we how best to make that process work with with both boards. And I know, you know, I think historically, maybe Cheryl, you could address, you know, this width of select board or, you know, that it seems the appointments have initiated have come from the planning board and then then shared with the select board, but I'm sure there's a history on that, but that doesn't mean that that's always the way it needs to be or should be. And so we do have the appointments for the master Master Plan Implementation Committee. Terms expire the end of July. So there are some new volunteer volunteer forms. And so there are actually, I think, more more volunteers that have signed up that exceed our additional, you know, the additional two members and so just wanted to maybe talk about, you know, the process with the select board. So that would be one of the items. So time is of the essence, and we just don't want to let that go too long without having reappointed that committee. So first week in August was what we were talking about, but but I'm flexible and it can be later if if it seems like folks are away.
I'm away from the third to the ninth.
Okay. And we're meeting on the eleventh. So possibly that following week. Again.
Which which week?
Well, if we meet the eleventh, that would be the third week in August. And again, we can send out a poll. I don't think we have to decide right now. And I'm not sure if they if they selected a date, but it would be the fifteenth, sixteen, seventeenth.
I'm just gonna throw out, I have commitments on Tuesday and Thursdays from six to seven thirty. I do jump from those commitments at seven typically on Thursdays that we meet.
Yep.
So I'd rather not add another conflict on the on a Thursday. And I will be on vacation the second and third week of August, so if we can. When I was on vacation in June, I ended up at town meeting and two work meetings. So every every night I was on vacation, I couldn't be with my family, which I'd rather not do in August. But if we if we we can try to figure out a date that works for everyone. Can I just mention one thing, Meredith, about the Master Plan Implementation Committee? Eileen Benson was just appointed this year, and so I would like to give her opportunity to continue to be to serve since she has only served for a few months, and she was a joint appointment already by us and by the select board. And then we just all voted for Roxanne, right? So and then I'll just add, just for the others, for the other members who've been on the committee, the the way it's worked in the past is the select board has contacted us that Suzanne or whoever has been in that position in the past is, you know, has taken the lead, I guess, and said, you know, members, your terms are up. Are you interested in serving again? And then members have responded. And I I guess that question would be to them, to the select board, is, you know, is that what they've typically done, right? So it's only then been when we've had a new appointments that we've come back to the planning board, I think. I think that's the way it's worked, just.
Yeah.
And I'm not discussing and trying to say whether that's a good way or a bad way. I'm just, you know, responding to what you said about what's been done in the past.
So I I think you've not been doing it properly, so that that's what we're hoping. That's part of the conversation that we would like to make sure that we're doing doing it properly.
I don't think it's the Master Plan Committee's process. Actually, it's the planning board and select board who have maybe haven't been doing it properly.
Right.
But the the other thing I'll say is that Dick Burke and Taber Keely are two members who have been on and served for a long time and were on the Master Plan Committee, as was I. So there's a lot of history and knowledge of the plan itself and the process that went into it. And I would say, and I will say when we meet jointly, that there's value in having folks who are familiar with the plan and familiar with what's been done. So that's it. That's all. That's all I want to say about it.
Can we also, just before that, if somebody other than or you or whoever is putting this together can put out an agenda well in advance, that would be good. Because I imagine if we're joining, it's more than just this topic or a couple of topics. I don't. And that's bringing a lot of people together in the in the summer. You know?
I know.
So I'm hoping it's a very robust meeting.
Yeah, I think you can be a very, you know, positive and, you know, just, um. Yeah, so definitely, I, you know.
And actually, one more thing I wanted to say, Meredith, about the the committee. You know, the 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 committee made a request that ended up being an article sponsored by others, but the committee made a request to expand the size of the committee due to the workload of the committee, but also due to wanting some diversity on the committee. And and I want to make sure that the rest of us don't lose sight of that in in the appointments. We've there's parts of town, as I mentioned, I think in comments at town meeting or maybe another planning board meetings that haven't had planning attention. They happen to be parts of town that have the greatest diversity, the greatest diversity in housing stock, and they haven't had a voice at the table oftentimes. And sometimes it's because they don't they there's not outreach to them to participate. And it's something where others who might be in the know might already have, you know, put in applications, but I I really want us to try and be thoughtful about being a bit more inclusive in outreach to folks. And I know that's something that the select board is supportive of in their adopting the report from the Equity and Inclusion for all committee. So I I just want to put that out there for the rest of the members to hear.
That's great.
Just sorry, Meredith.
Yes, yeah, go, Rich.
No, just one more. So just on that last comment that I made about like an agenda. So like, I guess where I'm going with that, like, if we're I guess what I'm looking for, are we are we going to come together like just this topic? Are we going to come together and talk about how we might do it in the future? Are we going to come together and make decisions? That's two different things. If we were going to come together and make decisions, I mean, there's work that I'd need to do beforehand, like, okay, who's throwing their hat in the ring? I'd like to know way before. I don't want to show up to a meeting and then just hear about things for the first time. So what I would say is second or first or third, whatever, August is coming up quick. And so I think that agenda has to be really like specific and would need to come out very soon. We don't work that closely with this like word on a lot of things that we do. I mean, we're, you know, aligned right on some things. So that's why I'm really, you know, it has to be a good meeting for me to think it makes sense.
Right, I I hear you. And I think this is more it's more of a general. So for example, I we won't be making the the appointments that evening. I think we're going to what we're going to talk about is process. So we can sort of, you know, talk about what the best process is, what's the most fair, you know? We now I they've actually, I believe, just voted to have a subcommittee to look at how to deal with volunteer forums to make sure that, you know, we are doing outreach, you know, that there's outreach, but that the the volunteer forums that are submitted, that they get, you know, a process to review those. And and so we can really have the the greatest expertise, you know, on on these boards that are reflective of the entire community and a diverse group of, you know, opinions and and, you know, precincts and that that it is as diverse as possible on on those boards. So but it this will be this will be a general pro it's more process than that we we won't make those specific appointments that night. You're muted. Sorry, Rich.
All right, thank. Yeah, then I just I get what I'll do is hold off until I see that agenda. I just my my issue is this, I I like the thought of it. But we have our own vote on our committee and they have their own vote. I wouldn't want to vote with them. So I like that you just said that.
Yeah.
Well, I also don't think, no offense to anybody on this call, but we're not the experts on diversity on this call. I don't know what people do in their private lives. But like the planning board is not typically the ones that would say, hey, are we reaching? Are we doing? Like, the town has diversity committees and things like that. I would say that the town, I don't know who in the town, but it's probably a full-time job, should start thinking about that and making in in doing something, calling a group of people together and making sure that like we're our process is pretty dialed in. The process that I'm thinking you're talking about is more planning work process and and things like that. Well, that's, you know what I mean? Like, I I don't I don't know that I could add any value at making sure that we are reaching all parts of the town on making sure that people you know, are able to come into committees for this town. I don't think that's my purview. I want to make sure that happens like as a citizen here, but yeah, I just I'm I'm really, and this isn't directed at humor, I'm just I'm really interested now in hearing what this is because I got to be honest with you, I might bow out because I don't think that would be appropriate for me to take part in.
Well, I I think what what we really what our mandate is, you know, and I look back and what we will be discussing is what what town meeting voted on for the Master Plan Implementation. I'm just using that as the specific items. I think we'll talk about a lot of things. But nothing's been decided firmly. And 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 we don't even have to, you know, we don't have to meet with the select board. It's just something that we thought might be a nice thing and let the town and let the town know what, you know, what we're working towards. But what I was going to say is, if if you read and I can actually, we can send you, you know, what is asked of the, you know, the membership of the, excuse me, of the Master Plan Implementation Committee is that they come with a background, whether it's a real estate background, whether it's an architecture, something pertinent, a financial economics, you know, that they that there is expertise that they come with to help do the work of the Master Plan Implementation Committee. So that is really, that's our directive is what town meeting voted voted for. And and so that's really what, you know, I think what the select board in setting up is going to, you know, say with the volunteer forums, that is specific to us, the planning board and the and the select board. That is our that is what we are. Our directive has been to to follow that. So yes, yes.
I just want to add, you know, I was involved in the when the article establishing the implementation committee was formed. And the reason that it was a joint appointment is that the implementation of the master plan itself, there's large parts of it the planning board is responsible for or the planning department, but there's large parts that are really under the select board's jurisdiction. And so it was to get, you know, you know, people who could serve to follow the the implementation in different directions, right? So for example, parts of it might be that the Parks Department's a lead on, but part of it might be that the DPW is the lead, you know, and it wouldn't have a planning rule whatsoever. And so that's why it was a joint appointment. And the as far as the qualifications themselves, you know, some of the larger pieces of recommendation like East Milton were further study, you know, further planning work. And that really kind of falls into kind of the the jurisdiction of professionals in planning or also, you know, this hiring of consultants. So that's that's just some background on on why it was this joint appointment.
And it could also be one other, you know, I'm just, I'll use the deck, for example. You know, I I I feel like and I came in late, but I I would have liked to have seen the planning board more involved with some of the design elements on on the deck. But I I think, you know, Tim, you might have been involved with the early part, and it might be. But I think things that we can communicate earlier in the process where things don't get so far down the road that there's no tree pits in East Milton Square that it's concrete, there's so much more concrete that has been added to that deck, which is really makes me sad every time I drive through because it means that it's going to be hotter for East Milton, it's going to be noisier, it's going to be, you know, there there were some things that I think if if the planning board could have had some input on some some of those things that we could have made a difference, but you know, at at a point where we are, you know, when it's late in the in the process, I think I would rather see us just have better communication, you know, when the select board, you know, when they are making just when they are making decisions, um, especially when it comes to things that are aesthetic or environmental or, or things that are under the planning board, that, that we can work together on them and sort of get ahead of things, so, um, just, you know, I think, um, I think the residents would appreciate that, so. This is another example of how we can work together.
Yeah, no, no, I, I, so now I, I kind of agree with you. I, I mean, I see where you're going now, and I agree with you. I will say this, though, um, like, I feel like in your position as the chair, you could, you could just, you know, have a meeting with Tim and the chair of the, the select board and kind of convey your feelings about where in the process you can get. I just worry that I'm not gonna add much value at a meeting, just in the way we've talked about it, because it sounds great. The only problem I have is, like, I don't see my job as making sure that the town gives us the right candidates to vote on. The town needs to come up with the candidates, we need to look at them and make some decisions. We have much bigger fish to fry than making sure that there's outreach done to bring people in. That's like somebody else's job, we all need to do our job and do it well, right? And we need to rely on people to do that. As far as the, the deck, I gotta say, I mean, I know there's a lot of complaints on Facebook right now. I was on the work committee when that was being discussed, and I was, if you go back and it's on video, I was one of the folks that was trying to defund it at the very beginning, and I came up with an idea to take it out, and then they got money at town meeting, and, you know, the work committee tried really hard to focus that, and, you know, and then when it came back around, you know, different, that board and this board, I've seen different parts of it and got to weigh in at a lot of different places. I, for one, um, quite honestly, am kind of, I'm excited about it, to be honest with you, because I've lived here for forty years in East Milton, and the, even the Christmas lights didn't match. The, the street lighting didn't match, it was the, the sidewalks didn't match. And all of that is actually taking a giant leap forward, and I'm really excited about it now. You know, I could complain about, like, the, the, how long it took and things like that, but I do work on public projects. And so I know how long things take when they're federally funded. I think there was a lot of points of way in during that project, but the problem is it's spread out over the last, like, eight years. And so unless you were on this board or that board or whatever board at that specific time, somebody else was weighing in, but people did. I, yeah, and I think it's what your comment before, it's all about, like, what point in the process and making sure that different boards have different, but it's also, well, what is our piece of that? I'm sure, Jesus, now everything's bleeding in over the last eleven years. I can't remember, uh, which board I was on, you know, when we were talking about, like, we, I mean, because I remember at one point we were trying to get, we were parking there. And I, and I'll be honest with you, at the time, I liked the idea of parking. Looking at it now, I'm really happy it's not parking, um, because, you know, e- even though it's green today, so I'm not gonna probably stand in. I do envision, like, Halloween, when there's, like, two hundred kids in the, it, up in the square, it's pretty awesome. And I, I can envision, like, you know, food trucks up there, like Tim talks about. That sounds great.
And I don't mean to say that, those were just a few items, but there's a lot of really, really good things about that. So the pedestrian safety, you know, I, there's, there's. And, and the other thing I was just gonna throw is, um, was, is Milton Landing and looking to the future of Milton Landing and other things that the master plan is, is trying to achieve. But we could have, you know, that could be a conversation where Cheryl, Tim, myself, you know, we could, we could meet separately and not do a full board meeting. I'm, I'm not, I just was throwing it out there because Arthur had approached me and, and thought it might be a good idea, but, I'm happy to, to sort of, you know, have an offline, you know, a meeting and, you know, relay what the interests, interests of the board, um, without, and then be able to publicly.
Yeah, and I know, I'm sorry, Cheryl, let me just, my last comment. And I don't want to derail anybody else's opportunity to get in that meeting. I am just giving my opinion, so I don't want to speak for anybody on this board. But what I would say at you as the chair, um, because I think most chairs would do this, right? You should be thinking about what you're really interested in accomplishing this year. And, you know, the months are gonna go by fast, you know, and, and then the end of the year is here. And so I would highly recommend, you know, if you've got thoughts on those subjects, to, to talk to the select board, to talk to Tim, because my theory is, or what I'm sitting here waiting for is that stuff to happen and be presented to us. You know, we're not, you're the chair, so, I mean, like, I don't think I need to sit in a meeting, like, to hear you say, because you're the chair, you, you know, whatever, what, I'm, I'm interested in to hear what you guys want to accomplish, and I'm ready to, to work on it. But I think time is of the essence, it's, it's, it'd be end of July really fast. So don't wait for me, is what I'm saying.
Cheryl, you had your hand up.
Yes, um, you know, I think one of the things that, um, and I think this ties to a discussion with the select board is, you know, um, the temporary apartment slash ADU bylaw, you know, the select board was supportive of, um, some form of ADU, and I think that, you know, everybody recognizes that there was differences of how, an opinion about how far changes to the temporary apartment bylaw should go. And so I do think, uh, because there was large interest in that, that could be a topic of discussion with the select board, and I'm just throwing that out there. The other thing I'll throw out there is that, um, economic development is learned, is, you know, a select board, you know, budget and so forth is select board. We all heard at town meeting, we're probably looking at an override. You know, where does economic development and zoning come together? You know, I often felt, and when I was chair of our board, um, I spoke to the chairs of the select board at the time, that, you know, zoning, um, can lead, for example, Milton Village, to economic development, to, to new tax revenue. And it really should be part of a larger town strategy, not just a planning board strategy. So are there initiatives that really are, I mean, the select board is the, the, the top of the pyramid, if you will, in terms of elected officials in town. So in some ways, there's some things that they might want us to work on, because, you know, they see in terms of their leadership role that need to be worked on. And so there's room for us to work together, I think, on big picture things. Then you get down to the nitpicky, or maybe not nitpicky, but really quality of life issues like traffic and parking, right? And we talk about it a lot because it hinders what we can do, or maybe it impacts what we can do from a zoning and planning point of view, but enforcement that we've talked about and other things really don't fall with us, they fall under the jurisdiction of the select board. So where we know that there are things where we interface, like, there are things that the select board does that we don't interface with at all. We may have a personal interest, but the planning board itself in front of official body doesn't have an interest in. Maybe we ask them to put together a list of where they think the things that there's overlap, and we put together and we can send to Tim what we think the overlap is. Like, I, I just threw out a few examples now, but everybody may have a few others. And we start with that. And so something that we know, um, that we have challenges with, we have challenges with affordable housing in this town. We were just talking about forty Bs, and we all, um, are either personally or know people who are personally impacted by all the pending forty Bs. And we know there's gonna be more to come, because we haven't hit the need yet. And as long as some of these are being challenged, you know, they could fall off the list. We need to see what the select board's thinking in terms of affordable housing. What do they want, do they want to work with us on something? We have a housing production plan that we jointly approve as a planning board and a select board, and we have responsibility for its implementation. That is part of our temporary safe harbor, is to make progress on that housing production plan. The ADU is in that housing production plan. I would like for us to talk about that in the context of affordable housing. So that, these are joint initiatives, right? So, um.
I think that's a great idea, Cheryl, to have them sort of put together a list of things that they're working on. I have a feeling it's a lot of the same things that we are already working on, um, and, you know, communicating that with them. Enforcement was a great example, because that's, that's something that we, we hear about continually, and we don't necessarily feel like it's improving, at least East Milton Square, to, I have not heard that they think enforcement's improving in other areas of, of town too. So there are some real, real, um, you know, things that we, we would just like to share the feedback that we're hearing from residents to make sure, I'm sure they are hearing about it too, but that we're actually doing something about it, that we're actually doing something about a loading zone, that we're actually doing things that when we're developing, we have the infrastructure, because it's, it's great to say we have this housing production plan and we, we need to keep creating more housing and more units, but if we don't have the infrastructure and if we don't, if our schools are overflowing, you know, it, how do we balance? How do we have balance? And, and that's where the goals that we're trying to achieve, but how do we, how do we actually, um, implement them in a way which is good for Milton and not creating another, another problem? So I, I think a lot of these things are, are, are great, and having this discussion is, is wonderful, so. So I can follow up, um, but I'm sorry, I have not, we've not heard from Sean or, or Maggie on, if you think that would be a good idea to maybe ask the select board, you know, what is their list of things that they would like to see and, and we can address that?
I don't know, I mean, um, I, we were elected to different boards, which have different purposes, and I think to a degree, I understand what, what's being said about working together, but I also think there's an expectation that the residents that elected us expect us, you know, to, to, you know, operate to fulfill the roles of our, of our own individual boards. And, um, so I, I think this, I, I can see, I can see both sides of it. I can see the need for collaboration, I can also see the, the, um, the importance of, of, um, each board having its own responsibilities.
I, I think it might be nice to have, um, a meeting, um, just so we all sort of come together and sort of meet each other, um, because I haven't spoken to all of the selectmen since I've been elected. I mean, I haven't reached out to them, they haven't reached out to me, so it kind of would be nice, I guess, sort of, to break bread, so to speak. And I think it's always good to collaborate where you can and, um, be respectful of each other's opinions when we don't always agree. So I think having an initial meeting, um, um, I think could be good. But again, our, I think my duty is really to the residents of the town, and, um, that's kind of who I sort of listen to and try to listen to really every day. And, um, but I think it is always better if we can work together and find solutions where we can. And one thing that sort of always disturbed me this past year is I don't think that the selectmen reached out to the planning board to talk about, um, the land swap on Guile Road. What is more important than, um, land use? Isn't that what zoning is really all about? And, um, they didn't really, as far as I know, reach out to get any, to get at, at least my opinion on it. So I was kind of disappointed in that, and they didn't even ask at town meeting either. So I didn't, so I guess it would probably be helpful to me kind of go over where we should collaborate, um, together.
Rich, sorry.
Yeah, no, just to turn, um, sorry, Mary, I struggled, because I, I like it work, right, my normal job, it's, I'm a huge, I like collaboration. My, one of my problems that I've noticed, though, just in local politics, was you, you, you got a year, you got three years, you got five years, whatever it is, right? It goes by really fast, and most of the stuff we work on is years and years and years, so it's, you know, you're picking up where the last person took, you know, left off. And I feel like, um, we in every board works on way too many things, because we have to. And when you work on too many things, you, you don't do them well, and you don't accomplish them fast. There's this, I forget what book it was, but, I mean, there's one, some article about, like, how many things you can actually do well, right? At one time, and it's, it's definitely not the amount of things that we've done on our plate. And so I liked what Cheryl and what Maggie and, um, Sean and you were all talking about, different ideas. I think my, one of my thoughts or suggestions would be, like, but what do we want to accomplish, right? Like, I, I'm just gonna say this, just remember, you, you had mentioned something about, um, you know, enforcement, you know, it's a huge problem I have is that before, as COVID was hitting, we laid off the enforcement officer, and I don't think they're back, right? And so we, for months and months and months, were getting really good in East Milton with parking. I mean, if you, 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 the people like, that, like, they're employed in this town, you know, I, I mean, heck, we, we got tickets, right, we're with a problem, right? But it was being fixed, and now it was like the, the traffic, I felt, was getting way better. That's been gone for two and a half years, and so never put back. And so that's an irritation, and that's an irritation in the entire community, and that's nobody's accomplished, nobody's doing. But when you're talking about dozens and dozens and dozens of things, it's one thing on the list, it doesn't rise. And I guess where I'm going with this is, maybe what we should be thinking of is, but what are we, what's like the one, like, we're gonna have projects that Tim's talking about that we're gonna have to work on, but what is like the one thing we really want to accomplish or the two things? Or maybe people are gonna take things and bring them back and do their own work. Maybe that's another avenue, like, and then you can say to the select board, is this on your list? Because we want to accomplish this and we need your help, because you have a piece of it, we have a piece of it, other people have pieces of it, and we want to drive. Just, just a thought, because I do, I mean, I think we're all kind of saying similar stuff here. It's just a little differently about to get there.
I like that, I like that, Rich. I think what we could do is we could put in a, on our agenda, um, a discussion of our goals for this, for this coming year. And I think we, we've put a lot out there that we're all wanting to see, um, and we do juggle different things, obviously, this overlay zoning, um, E- East Milton, this is gonna take a lot of time, and we don't know what else is gonna be coming at us, um, for other applicants. So maybe, you know, we set our, our goals, our priorities, um, and, um, and then have, you know, I would be happy as a representative of the residents of Milton, but, but representing, you know, my fellow board members to just have a meeting, and meet with Arthur and, and share our interests and our, you know, our concerns and, and ways we can work together on, on different, um, on different things. And that, that can be a starting point, and then we can, you know, decide if we, if we need to all meet in person, but it's, but I think having, you know, a having our own, what the planning board wants to accomplish, um, I, I, I hear you all, so. And I think it's a lot of what the pla, what the select board would want to see too. I, I don't think there's, I don't think there's conflicts there, so. Working together. All right, does that sound like a good first step? That we put that on our agenda for a future meeting? And I know they're, they're talking about, um, the process for their appointments, um, and so maybe our board just be thinking about, you know, what, what we'll want to do is make sure that all the volunteer forms, um, that everyone has gotten all the volunteer forms in, has a chance to review them, um, just sort of look at, because we, there's, there's a lot of things, you know, as Cheryl alluded to, that the, that the master plan calls for. Um, and then maybe people who have expertise, you know, with Milton Landing area, you know, with, with certain, with certain experiences that, that would be really valuable to Empic, so.
So are you asking the, um, current members to submit new applications?
That's, that's.
Do you have a meeting on Monday? The Master Plan Implementation Committee has a meeting on Monday.
You know what, I think that would be great, because honestly, I, you know, when, when, and I'm not just using, but Elaine was nominated, I have no idea what experience, like, what, what her background is or anything that, that, what we typically would ask for a volunteer. I, I don't know if she filled out a volunteer form, and, and maybe she did, um. I'm, I'm, I'm familiar with the people who have been on the board longer, because I've been following, you know, um, and I, I know, I just, I know most people. And I, I know, I just, I know most people, you know, architects or what their, you know, development professional.
Yeah, Elaine, Elaine works for a real estate developer in Boston.
So I'm just, I was just using that as an example, you know, um.
Yeah, I mean, she lives in East Milton, that was, you know, one of the things that we've, um, and she also, as we talked about, um, you know, has a um, a young family. So we didn't want everybody to be, you know, same place in life, you know, life stage. Interests are different, obviously, when you have a young family versus when you're retired. I mean, maybe they're not, but I think they can be. Because the things that are top of mind are maybe a little bit different, right? Like somebody might be more top of mind about playgrounds, for example. Or somebody might be more top of mind about traffic. And, you know, some of it's based on where they live too, so that was, you know, like where there's planning efforts in East Milton. And um, and, and anyway, so that was, uh,
That would be helpful and, and, and the other thing too is you don't want everyone to be, we don't want a whole board of architects, you know, we don't want Empic to be, everyone to be an architect and not, or everyone to be a real estate developer, you know, you, you want a balance there. And so I would say, I would, I think it would be great. Yeah.
How long have they appointed for?
It's one, one
Yeah, sorry, it's a one-year appointment. And the, the thing I want to just make sure everybody's clear about is we're not writing a plan, the plan, the committee doesn't, isn't writing a plan, the plan's already written. You know, and what we're, what we're charged with is you know, eh, especially the three of us who served on the committee, the Master Plan Committee itself. After going through two years of working on that was, and the other people, the five hundred people who participated was they didn't want to see it collect dust on the shelf. So, you know, the way that the consultant recommended that that not happen is to have a committee that was responsible for tracking its implementation. Just want to be clear, that's what the committee's chart is. There are several things that are, require next steps of study, like all the business districts, right? So that's more planning, but not everything, you know, was requiring more study. Some of it in fact is just, um, I would call it more integrating sort of the strategic planning of the whole town. You know, so like the Parks Department knows what's in the plan, you know, that the town administrator knows what's in the plan, so as they're doing their work, and it was always deemed to be a living document and as I said, um, I think at town meeting was that, um, you know, we're we're getting closer to the end of it, of the ten years of the plan and the committee's focus really, yeah, now it should, in the plan of the committee, what we've talked about is really focusing on documenting what we see is what's been done, where there's some gaps, what can be done in the next two years. And then what do we think, would we recommend that the um, the plan be updated? You know, but I will make note that, you know, it was a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars at least that was invested in in the plan at the time in developing it. So if we do recommend an update, I don't know if it'll still be a hundred and twenty-five or it'll be
You can go through that board to make an update, you have to go, you'd have to go to like, right, you gotta go to town meeting, that has to be approved.
The whole idea about updating it, it would have to count. Yeah, the expenditure would have to come from town meeting, obviously, but the whole plant, the plan, you know, that plan, the master plan process was, um, a committee was formed, but it was a committee, I think the planning board. Well, the committee was chaired by Emily Innis, who was on the planning board at the time. And I think it was the, that, that master plan committee itself. I don't remember if there was a joint appointment to it or what have you. I was appointed as a resident. I wasn't on a, a board or appointed board at the time, so that was.
The, the folks that are appointed right now are charged with something specific. The previous board was charged with building it. It was a project, but I, I understood a lot. So I guess my question though is, so when you were like joining the Warren Committee, and I don't know what it's like today, but when I joined the Warren Committee, they, you know, Brian Walsh said, I, I, you know, you, I kind of expect people to stay on for three years, like a three-year commitment, right? Don't have to, but it's three-year commitment. Now, you're appointed every year. And so somebody that gets on kind of figures they're gonna be on for three years and it's like you probably have a discussion with somebody. And obviously whoever the appointing person, you know, they can change that when, when it gets in. I guess what I'm, what I'm trying to figure out is what are we trying to, like, like, I don't I don't, it, like, and I, there's a lot of people that vote these in, right? So it's a vote of us and it's a vote of the select board to either put somebody in or kick somebody out. I'm not necessarily, it's tough to find people for gigs. Um, and if people want to be on them, in my opinion, great. Um, and as people are coming off, we should be voting new people on. I also don't wanna like stack the deck either, and so you want like a variation of different voices on there. And hopefully, you know, we'll have that or we have that. So I guess my question, one of my other questions would be is is, is there an opening right now? And that's the thing, reason why we're talking about it? Or are we in, you know, making it bigger so there's a bunch of appointments? Or is we trying to put new people on to change it or something? I just, I'm, I'm not following.
There's two, there's two new positions. It's been a five-person um, committee and now it's a seven-person committee. Most have been on, Elaine was newly appointed to Liz Mitchell stepped down earlier than her term, um, and so so um, Elaine is fulfilling a term um, that was going to expire on, at the end of July.
Oh, no, understood.
As everyone else's, yes.
I guess what I would, I would imagine though, she was probably thinking she's not gonna just be here for a couple of months. She's now starting to learn or get her, but, and so I, I guess, I mean, so we've got two, it sounds like then two other folks. That just, there isn't somebody, so we've got to figure that out. I guess my, my thing would be is what's the standard? Like, I don't think, like, you know, I don't think the Warren Committee or any of the other ones ask people to re fill out forms every year. I don't think that, personally, I don't think that's appropriate. We should probably just be looking at the new people. If there's somebody on there that, two boards, that means all select board members and folks here, the vast majority of both boards together, want to remove somebody, that's a different conversation. Um, then we would probably just have to have that. It'd be probably uncomfortable, but we'd have to just have that conversation.
Yeah, I mean, my feeling was that most of boards, you know, people are first ask if they want, if they're still interested in continuing. I mean, the Historical Commission, I think, has had the same position for a long time, the Conservation Commission. When somebody leaves, they turn them over. I mean, I frankly think it would, you know, be I'm not sure what it says to the members who are on, been serving, who express interest in continuing to serve, you know, if um, I mean, they've donated a lot of time and effort and energy to it, but that's.
One, one ulterior thought could be is that maybe we get together with the select board and say, so, so, so Brian Walsh was always very open and honest about his three years. I mean, I was on for six, I mean, way more than he probably should, but he says I at least want to see people there for three, three, to it allows you to keep a fifteen-member board, which is very hard. Perhaps, I mean, this sounds like a tough board or committee to find lots and lots of people into the future. And so maybe what we do is ask the select board their feeling on how long people should attend, like beyond this. I would imagine it should be more than one year, because I feel like any board, you're just learning your first year. Um, and then you, you, you're kind of getting into the groove after your second, uh, especially a board like that. I don't know, maybe we should find that out too.
I agree with you.
I think you made like a, a large, I'm sorry, Meredith.
I just, I was gonna say, I don't, I don't, um, I, the, the situation is, I don't think anyone's wanting to replace, you know, current board members necessarily, that's not really the, the goal. The issue is more of, we have four volunteer forms and two positions. So that's, we have to decide, you know, we would have to make a nomination for the, everyone has to be
We got way more than
But there could be discussion, you know, on, um, for other reasons too, and so.
So, just a couple of things. I know this, we're focusing a lot on this this implementation committee, which is fine, and I guess I sort of agreed it to the Warren Committee. So the way I understand the Warren Committee too, it's a three-year commitment, usually if you want to, um, in the past, I think you've been asked if, if they did not have any other interested parties. The moderator would ask the existing members if they would like to continue and I think normally they did. And so I think what has happened recently is with everything going on in town, all of a sudden you know, I think it's fabulous that more people want to get involved and that's sort of why I got involved too. So I think what's happening is this year, particularly in the Warren Committee, there wasn't a choice. If your three-year term was up, you were not asked if you wanted to stay on. You were just retired because you were there for a three-year term and you, they had from what I hear, seventeen or eighteen people put their applications in and they just they turn, they just had people turn over and that is kind of what makes the town great, you know, you get new fresh perspectives and I, I don't know everybody who was appointed to the Warren Committee, but I think the moderator tried to do a really good job trying to get people from different precincts and different age groups and backgrounds. So I kind of feel like, yes, the Master Plan Implementation Committee could be at that same road now. That maybe a lot of people are trying to get involved. And now that the commitment is only, or the appointment was only for one year, it's time to kind of recycle and bring in some new people from different precincts with different point of view, so different precincts are represented. And maybe to Cheryl's point, that um, maybe some, you know, development can go on in those precincts. But I, and I kind of was just wondering what other um, committees are we responsible for? So I know there's this one committee, are there any other committees? And am I going to be asked to be on another committee? And when would I be asked to do that? So then I can plan my um, schedule out. I think that Meredith had mentioned like a day one, that there was an open space committee. I'd love to be on that, but I haven't heard anything about that. So what other committees are, is the planning board responsible for? And what other of those committees are um, jointly um, appointed by the selectman?
So I can, there's Ca- Capital Improvement Committee, um, is one that we have a representative. The Open Space Committee, Empic. We did have Affordable Housing. Rich, were, were you a, on the Affordable Housing?
I was um, the first year or two, but then I came off. And then it was Kathleen, I believe, was that right, Cheryl?
Yeah, the housing, the housing committee though is now disbanded. Or it was intended, it was a select board committee.
Yeah.
It was mostly focused on updating the housing production plan.
And it was on the, the other one, I mean.
And you're on the CPC though, Rich.
And the CPC, yeah.
Yeah, I, you know, so just, sorry.
It's also something like a broadband or something, I don't know.
I, I didn't do that, but, um, or maybe, I don't know. Yeah, one thing I would, would mention though, about those, the folks that are, that are coming on. So one of, so this is kind of a unique, and I don't have interest in being on the Implementation Committee. I, I was not part of the building of that. The people that come on there, they have to know, and hopefully the select board, and we will, you know, kind of let them know. They don't get to decide what, what's done in the Implementation Committee, town meeting does. And so this is something that's already been decided by town meeting, whether I agree with it or not. And their job is to implement it now. And so, you know, the people that come on there, we want to make sure they're chock, they, they want to implement it. And they want to further things and make things better, uh, and, and, and keep moving. And if, you know, if something that needs to be changed, yeah, so great, bring it to town meeting, that's a two, that's a that's a big change that, that town meeting has to pay for and then, and then dive into. So, so I just, I just worry because I do know that sometimes different parts of you know, in history, you get, you know, there was a time when I was in the Warren Committee, we, we definitely didn't have more than ten or eleven, couldn't find fifteen. Now there's probably a lot of people, right, that want to be on the planning board. In a couple of years, there will be, it'll be hard to find one. Now a lot of people want to be on the Implementation Committee and there's probably a reason. There could be even folks that, you know, want to see things changed. I just, I worry that change. So we get somebody like that, then there's inaction and then the town isn't getting what they ask for. So anyway, that's just, again, not even saying I, I agree or disagree with something that's in this, I just you know, you have to be pretty passionate about driving it.
They're all good, good comments. Anyone else? Any comments?
I'll make one. We're approaching four hours.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I was
Early tonight. All right, so let's, um, why don't I put on the agenda? Just a future agenda, you know, goals for what we want to accomplish and also appointments that we would like to see, um, and it represent in our and discuss what, what our members um, would like to, what boards they would like to be on and represent. So we can nominate and
I'd like for us to think about whether we have any small working group amongst ourselves. It may not be a formal committee, but like Denny and I worked with Tim on, uh, the tree. I don't, it, we called it, the tree bylaw, that's what we called it. But, you know, we were working on cut and fill. You know, we, we've talked about working on our rules and regs. I mean, these, um, they're not as interesting for other parties maybe. But, you know, the cut and fill is really, really important for, like, that subdivision on Pleasant. Pleasant, um, on, um, even though the forty Bs get to weigh everything, I want them to say that they're having to weigh our cut and fill retirements because coming in and, and doing what they're doing on these forty Bs is just so overly aggressive. You know, I want them to just have to justify it and have to make it harder. I don't know, make them think about it a little bit more and so the, these are things that we see in our, you know, day-to-day applications and I want us to think about those. And, you know, I've been on the board a long time and we put them on the back burner a number of times. We bring them up and we backburner them. And so, um, you know, if there's not enough other committee work that everybody's really busy with, you know, because we don't have like the housing committees now. I'd love to see some work done, you know, um, that somebody could volunteer on ad hoc, you know, planning board committee.
How far can we go with that? Because I'll tell you, one of the things that has just irritated me for years is that it's the comment, the question, the comments that we all make and I make them is, well, that's enforcement, we are the enforcement group. Right? The problem is that seemingly simple things could be changed if somebody did it. And so if, I guess, if, it would be, like, one of the things I'd like to do is just even as it's this in here, is start having those conversations with the correct boards and getting people together to start saying, well, why isn't this happening? Is it something that the planning board's doing wrong? Is it something the select board's doing wrong? We're not in the right enforcement officer, like, what's going on? Because, you know, I could probably give you five things that's, things, things that I see on a day-to-day basis that I know full well you can change them if somebody actually does something. But the reason that they're not doing it is I don't think it's because they don't want to, it's they can't for some reason. And what is that? What board can help fix that? I don't know, I like, I, I started by saying, how far do you want to go with this? Because that's a little way outside of our thing. But it touches us, it affects us in our group.
So I would be happy to work with Tim um, on this. I don't know if there's somebody who wants to join Tim and I um, to have just a, you know, a, a working group on this.
I can do it, whatever you need me to do.
All right, Tim, does that sound okay as a starting point for this? And looking at the, and looking at the volunteers' wa, forms and renew.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll, I'll get a list from the front office about all the boards and committees that have planning board appointments to them.
That would be great. That would be great.
Okay. Motion to adjourn.
I know, this is a, and we'll just, we do have something on for scenic road signage. But I think we can defer that to our, our next meeting. It's an exciting idea that actually came from the Conservation Commission, which um, I think would help us with the cutting of trees and removal of stone walls accidentally, so.
I'll send a kind of more explanatory email with some of the photos to the planning board members, um, and then they can just have that in their pocket.
Okay, on that topic, Meredith, Tim circulated to, eh, li, um, links to two towns, uh, scenic road bylaws.
Yes.
I'd love to see that be something that we, we work on.
I think that could be a great, great project. Um, I know the Historical Commission would love, it's gonna be on the Historical Commission agenda. Um, consistency with signage, you know, throughout town, you know, we, um, but yes, let's definitely, um, I, I think, um, we can do some great work with that project, so. Thank you, Tim, for sending those. And with that, um, motion to adjourn?
Yes.
We had one, sorry. Yes, second, all in favor? Roll call, Rich?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Good night, all.
Okay.